The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding.
Excellent. Good morning, everybody. Happy Halloween. Happy to see everybody here today. So we have community development. Mark is handing out just, first of all, all of the page numbers for all of our budgets in this big lovely book here. Ours, we are going to be hopping around a lot, so we're not going to go through every single budget, but I did highlight the budgets that we are going to go through. But if you do have questions about any of the others, please, you know, feel free to let us know or ask away. So we have that, and then Mark's going to be handing out some other items regarding our Healthy Neighborhood Initiative budget item that we're going to discuss first. So just a quick recap. Community Development has four divisions. We have the Planning Services Division, Assessment Services Division, Inspection Services Division, and then Economic Development Division. So we have the four divisions right on the second floor here at City Hall. Looking at the strategic plan here, we have quite a few goals and objectives in here. The big ones are economic development and neighborhood, and then some quality of life objectives, too, that our department is responsible for. So our annual program of work every year, and then, of course, our budget really aligns with the strategic plan and, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. So with that, the first item that we would like to talk about is something that we have talked about before, but I think we have a little bit more detail and clarity that we would like to discuss today regarding our Healthy Neighborhood Initiative budget. So on the page that handout I gave you, our budget is on page 247 of your book. If you'd like to follow along, otherwise, I'll pass it over to Mark and let him talk a little bit about the budget and kind of some changes we're looking at.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. So two handouts for you that I wanted to quickly go over with you, kind of show you what's been going on with the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative and where the current fund is at. So first, we do have the Excel spreadsheet. It should be the second one, actually, I handed you. This kind of shows the cash balance projected going into 2024. We look to have about 2.1 million remaining in that fund. That's approximate. We'll see how this year finishes out for program funding. So we've been using that funding, and we had sent you maybe a couple of weeks ago a newsletter article kind of talking about the success of those programs. We operate five or six programs out of that fund. For the first time ever, they've been so successful this year to the point where we allocated all of the funding by July. In previous years, those programs have run the entire year, and we've never spent all the money. But with a lot of the work that city staff has been doing, we actually were out by July. So that's a great thing to see, that those funds are getting out to the community, having an impact on housing.
Mark, if you just could, just as way of background, explain this fund, where it came from, because that's, you know, just that history, because I think most council members aren't even aware of it. And I would even say Paul, because this fund didn't exist when you were on the council last time.
Yeah, definitely. So our HNI fund is created through the city's TIF districts. When the city closes a TID district, we have the ability through state statute to extend it for one year on what's called the Affordable Housing Extension. That extension grants us, those funds for that one year are given to the city and must be used on affordable and workforce housing activities. State statute actually identifies that 75% of the money must be used for workforce housing, meaning it can't be used on programs that person spends more than 30%, their gross monthly income on housing-related expenses. And then the other 25% must still be spent on housing-related activities. Doesn't have that same affordability requirement tied to it, but has to be housing-related. That fund was started back in about 2015, 2016, is when the city first closed some of its TIDS to begin that Affordable or Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative fund. So we've been operating various versions of those programs ever since. And obviously, over the years, they've changed exactly what we're doing, how much money is into those programs. Over the years, we've tried different programs. Some worked, some didn't. Every year, we take a look at that and say, okay, which of these programs are being effective, which are not, and try to move them around to be as successful as possible. So kind of looking at the cash balance, you can see, you know, the fund is starting to diminish. We no longer have large TIDS that are closing that are preventing a large cash flow influx into that fund. So we're starting to get down towards the end of what is available in that fund. Now, we do have some TIDS closing, you know, '28, '29, that will bring some in, but we're starting to get pretty low in that funding source. And we'll talk more about this in a second, but I just want to say, we're starting with about 2.1-ish million for this year. Kind of show you the effect the fund is having. The other handout we have for you gives a couple examples of projects that have been done and completed through these programs. There are three examples of housing rehab, single-family owner-occupied housing rehab projects that we have done. First example is 910 Harney Avenue. A project was done in 2016 for about 20, a little under 20 years, excuse me, a little over $22,000. Since that project was done, the city increased the assessed value of that project by 6,300, so immediately after, 6,300 in new assessed value came onto the tax roll for the city. And the city's portion, kind of since that time, you know, it's about $355 a year, or a total of almost $900 a year of total taxable value increase because of this project. And then we have some before and after photos. You can kind of see some of the work that was done on that property. Second example is Irving Street, 1020 East Irving. That was again a 2016 loan for about $30,000. That gutter remodeled kitchen and bathrooms. Great thing that this one shows is these programs, there are zero interest-deferred loans. However, if the property is sold, we get all of the money back and can put it into another project. So this, the assessed value by 2022, increased by almost $34,000. The property was sold in 2019, or excuse me, listed for sale in early 2019, sold in April of 2019. So we got the entire $30,000 that we invested in the project back, plus we've increased the tax roll of the city up to almost $1,700 a year. So we've increased the tax roll and gotten our money back in that project. And then third is an example on Evline Street. Again, about $16,000 loan in 2017, total of about $27,700 in increased assessed value. Again, sold in 2021. So we realized that entire $16,000 back, plus we've managed to increase the total tax roll for almost $3,000. So these programs are benefiting the residents, but also benefiting the city, because we're increasing the tax roll, and we get the money back when the house sells, so we can reinvest it into another project. So we just wanted to show some examples of how these projects have been successful. We've improved the city, and we got the money back, so now we can loan it out to another family and do the same thing.
So with that, part of the GOHNI, or sorry, the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative funding, when we received it, starting in about 2015, starting in 2016, the city provided a portion of those funds to the Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, GOHNI. So since 2016, we've provided about $930,000. We average a little over $100,000 a year. So the, you know, at that time in 2016, 2017, the idea was to give GOHNI seed money to, you know, figure out a way to, you know, for them to find a funding source, you know, so they could survive as a public-private organization. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to identify that. Their original business plan was to rehab homes, kind of flip them, sell them, or lease them out, and they decided not to go down that path, which is totally fine. I've been working with them for over two and a half years, trying to, you know, encourage them to find other funding sources, and they have went to some public or some private foundations and has received about $75,000 last year. But unfortunately, you know, as Mark and I are taking a look at our balance for HNI or her Healthy Neighborhood Fund, we see that fund, that's going down and is going to be out of money in 2027 if we continue to fund GOHNI. And when we look at the state statute, we also don't believe that the money we're giving to GOHNI meets the state statutes. So those are some kind of concerns that we have. So that was the reason why we did submit a budget enhancement to city manager Roloff to fund GOHNI out of the levy and remove it from this, so we can preserve the funds for, you know, the actual programming. And then we do have some staff, city staff admin time in there, just to administer those programs, but we have decreased that in half from 2023 to 2024 to account, you know, for those loss of funds. So we're taking ourselves off of, you know, out of that account, too. But really, you know, we believe that the housing programs have a huge impact on the city. It's one of the few kind of pots of money that we can use, and as Mark said, it's for that affordable workforce housing. So when somebody comes to our counter, first, we see if we can get them into the C2BG program. That's usually 80% of LMI or under, but if they're between that 80% to 120% kind of, you know, income, which is what usually we call like affordable workforce housing, then we can, they can apply for this program here. So that's definitely a tier, income tier, that still needs assistance, that we want to make sure that we have, you know, funds for people to invest, you know, in the houses here, the existing houses. And that's an important part of our housing study. We talk about, you know, new multifamily, new subdivisions, but it's just, it is important to invest in our existing housing stock to make sure that's healthy and it's growing, encouraging people to move to our neighborhoods. So this is a funding source that we really want to, you know, protect. And as you see in the spreadsheet that Mark handed out, if we do remove the GOHNI funding, the fund is sustained through 2027. It's about $39,000 that's left in the fund, but as Mark said, starting in '28, '29, '30, we do have some other TIDS that will be closing that will get a little cash balance, but it's still going to be low. So we're still going to have to look in a couple of years of how we can make sure that we're preserving this funding source.
The 640 that's in there, that's the loans, that's the other stuff? I just want to, because GOHNI is not killing this account. I just want to make sure it's coming across, that that's not the reason. I mean, it really isn't.
The 640 is all the program, it's the programs we operate. It's the new homes in your neighborhood. It's the down payment assistance. It's the owner-occupied rehab. That 640 is just the program money that we're trying to loan out every year to make improvements in homes.
And yet, that money's supposed to come back.
That money does come back, and we have about 60,000 a year.
That's on average. That's our best guess. I mean, it could be 80,000, it could be 40,000. It depends. If houses are sold, then people, you know, it just depends on the situation.
Yeah, our programs, some of the programs require no repayment until the house sold. Many of them require quarterly repayments at 0% interest. But again, the value of these loans, we're not, it doesn't generate a lot. We get in just repayments on those, about 60 grand. Obviously, if a house or two sells, that may go up. If none sell, it may end up a little lower.
Yeah, over time, you know, I've seen these revolving loan funds. This is still early in its infancy. You'll see that number go up in a few years, because as homes start to sell, because if people are hanging on to it, if, I mean, ideally, you get a young couple, you know, in their 30s or something, that gets a loan like this. You hope they hang on to that home for 30, 40 years. They may or may not, but you'll see that mature, and you'll get more, you'll get closer to, you know, 100,000 a year. And then it'll be a good reliable return on our investment. But if that, it's 600 out the door, the 600 was out the door by July. So, I mean, that, that's really a good news, because the program's so popular, we ran out of funds. But the purpose of this fund is for exactly those types of things. So yeah, it's out of, you know, how much we spent last year roughly, you know, 700,000 or something like, no, that was more like 800,000. 640 of it was for the loans, and that's a good thing. But the other 160 was us and GOHNI. And so I instructed Kelly to reduce our take down to 50,000 from 100, because, and that's money that comes out of the general fund, because we're just reimbursing the general fund for work that the staff does. Staff's still going to be doing the work. They're just not just, we just can't get reimbursed for it. And so that's one of those little revenues that takes a ding on the general fund. But given the fact that the program is intended for what that 640 uses for, that's really the challenge we're having. I know a lot of you like GOHNI, and they do a very nice job of getting the neighborhoods organized, and they've got activities, but it's not contributing to the low and moderate income benefit that we're talking about. So the challenge is, what do we do with GOHNI? It's probably not the right thing to fund them out of there. So that's why I said, okay, Kelly, put it in, ask for an enhancement. I did not include it, because as Russ and I had to balance things, so I didn't, this is one that I felt was appropriate to have a good discussion, and that's why Kelly said, I'm coming out of the gate with GOHNI. And I said, good, because I didn't want to see it get buried in, you know, in between the Assessor and the Planning Services Division. No disrespect to either of those, but I just didn't want it to get lost. And I said, come out of the gate with it, and then we can have this discussion. So we know the value GOHNI provides, but I don't think this is the right funding source for it.
I guess I'm fine having it be out of the general fund, if that's where we want to put it, but I'm not ready to reduce GOHNI's amount at this point. They are getting 100,000, reducing it to 75. Is that what we're looking at?
My request was 75,000 in the budget enhancement.
Hey, I know that the long-term plan is to try to get them to be more or less self-sufficient. Maybe we can enter into some sort of like a three-year or five-year contract that shows that dip. I think we kind of go through this every year, right, where we say, hey, we want to reduce your funding, but then they say, we're not ready. I think if we put it on paper and say, you have to be ready in three years, or something like that, that might be a better way to go out than every year have this talk about reducing their funding. So I know, I don't think they're ready to make that cut in their budget. So I support 100,000 for them.
Kelly, you made a comment about compliance with state statutes. Can you expand on that?
Yeah. So the way the fund is derived from that Affordable Housing Extension, that state statute says you're supposed to spend the money on two activities. LMI housing or affordable housing, 75% of it has to be on those activities. And then as basically says, the other 25% has to still be on housing activities, but it doesn't have the same workforce requirement. When GOHNI was originally paid out of this fund, and the seed money was there to start helping them, they were doing some of those housing activities. They were looking at doing acquire, rehab, resale, affordable housing activities. They've moved away from that, which they provide great benefits to the city, just not in that aspect, which is where we believe they don't necessarily meet then the intent of those two sources of what you're supposed to use this fund on.
So coupled just with the funds running out, and then meeting state statutes, that's why we recommended the budget enhancement for out of the levy.
Thank you. In terms of administering the programming, the loan, the loan stuff, the grants, can you attribute how much is, I don't know how to say this right, but how much is staff initiated compared to like GOHNI initiated? We know that they assist in getting the message out on those programs within their community, within the neighborhood associations and stuff, but like, is it mostly staff that's actually?
It is the vast majority is staff.
Yes.
Staff is doing most of the outreach, the marketing of the programs.
I'd say 95% of it.
Yeah. And part of the reimbursement that I think is still appropriate is the marketing. In a weird combination, Parks and Community Development share a marketing person, and they put on programs with bankers and realtors, usually in like February, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and so that has been the one thing that has really gotten people interested in this, because a realtor will tell somebody, look, you can buy this house, and you're also eligible for this program through the city. So they'll get them to qualify for a mortgage on a house that needs a few little things that could fix it up, and then they immediately steer them towards, towards Mark and his staff.
Yeah, really, so for the last three years now, we've done a lunch and learn program, and the popularity of these programs is, you can directly correlate to the success of that lunch and learn. Since we started doing that in the last three years, the interest in these programs has just skyrocketed.
I think we had over 100 people earlier this year when we did it. We had to do it at the convention center. So it's a good problem to have, but like I said, you know, we really believe that the funds should be spent on programming. And it's something that, it's very important for us. It's important as far, part of the strategic plan. It's just important as part of implementing the housing study, so that's why we wanted to discuss it today.
And just to clarify, the funding level for the programming stays the same?
We are. And it's part of that, when we, you know, earlier this year, when we took a look at the funding, we did look at there's any of our funds, the programs that were not really being utilized. So we did change some things up, but we did keep the same level of funding, just based on the response that we've received this year.
In regards to, you guys are all looking at me. I think we did a good job yesterday controlling our initial reactions to some of the things yesterday. I think in terms of an enhancement or that discussion as a, you know, a more generalized topic is probably best kept for the end of the day, after everybody's had their shake at us. I'd probably say, Kelly, you may want to come back this afternoon when it's question and answer time.
Okay.
For us, that might be a worthy thing for you to put on your calendar this afternoon.
Okay.
That way we don't eat up your two hours on one topic, because we probably could.
No, no worries. We understand. So, okay, well, thank you. If you have any questions, let me know, otherwise, we'll be back today.
I do have one.
Sure.
Like, I'm looking at this math, and I'm just trying to figure out, like, we can't continue to put out 640 and bring in 62, 100.
Absolutely. So we know that the program, that's probably next, the program funding. We know that we're going to have to look at that, but we need to do one thing at a time. We're trying to maximize it, and we have our kind of new numbers for TIF as far as, you know, the equalized value and everything. So we're going to take another look at this now and see, you know, when we do close those TIDS or that extra year, if that funding has gone up, how much we'll get, so.
Okay.
Do you know, Ralph Ballpark, what he was actually doing?
You've looked ahead even past these four years. You've actually gone to 2029.
Oh, yeah. We've gone 10, 15 years. It kind of ebbs and flows, really, like I said, you know, we, this was funded with like TID 7, some of those really large ones, so it was millions and millions of dollars.
Okay.
So we do have, you know, some balances coming in. And then, of course, the other idea I had is when the TIDS actually close and we get that funding back that we split with the other four taxing jurisdictions, should we put the city's share in this, too? So that's another idea, too, that we could look at to see what funding, you know, that would add to this also.
Yeah, Long Green Finance had set a policy, a recommendation to council that those funds, when they get doled out to the city, county, school district, that it be used for economic development. There was never, I think they kept it loose enough that it wasn't.
Too restrictive?
Too restrictive, yeah. So it would be in keeping with that policy, but this is a new council, so you have every right to take a fresh look at it, too. So, yeah, that, that's another option. But in '28, '29, Kelly's already done some closure analysis, and those, some of the, they're not huge TIFs, but they're probably the second tier of TIFs after TIF 7. So maybe a few hundred thousand a year for a couple of years that we could be getting, not including the closeout money.
Right.
Hypothetically, now that these programs are popular, we shouldn't have our heavy years now, right? I mean, hopefully, we're.
Hopefully, and like, you know, Mark said, you know, hopefully, maybe that income, that revenue annually will go up a little bit, too, as we have more and more of those loans out there.
And we may, and, you know, city manager said, some of these early loans are getting to the point where those houses may start to turn over, which will bring funds back in.
And, I mean, we could always certainly look at the terms. Right now, it's a 0% loan, and at that time, it was somewhat to be a little bit lower than a traditional banking, but as the interest rates, you know, prime is up a little bit, too, maybe we could look at that and just have a small 1%, 2% to it, generate a little bit more income also. It'd still be more favorable than, you know, going to a regular lending institution, but still encourage people to take part of the program, to invest in their home. So we do have a lot of options that we are looking at, but, you know, the big one was just with GOHNI, we wanted to make sure that we were appropriately using these funds as, you know, required by the state statute.
And we'll be talking about the TIFs a little later.
Yes.
Russ was pointing out some of the TIF numbers here to me, but we can wait till we get to your spot.
Sure, okay. Well, on the handout that we have here on page 155 is just the general fund for planning, and Mark's going to talk a little bit about the housing plan implementation and some of, you know, the, in the general planning budget, what we plan to do, and as part of the housing implementation that we have with the CIP funds.
Yeah, so, you know, council had allocated us some money through the CIP funding for housing implementation, and we have touched on this kind of back when we had that housing workshop a couple of months back. The city does currently have an RFP out for that housing design book that we had talked about. We are looking for, hopefully, those proposals coming in by the end of this month, so we can get that project off the ground. We are still continuing to use some of that funding to look into some of those larger housing projects, but we had talked kind of about that Sheboygan model, where they had tried to look at that, so we're continuing to look into that. 2024, we just want to continue that housing implementation, hopefully, you know, through some CIP dollars, where there are some other program and activities that we'd like to do, trying to get some more workforce housing built in the city, and using those funds to maybe help facilitate some of that type of workforce housing. But, you know, so far, housing implementation has gone well. You know, we did the zoning updates, which we have seen a benefit from. We have more people looking at the ADUs, that we did those code updates. You know, we increased density in some of those things to make it easier for people to get that workforce housing established in the city. But we really want to continue pushing forward that housing study. We know there's still a lot of needs out there, and affordability of housing is still an issue in our community like many, so we're hoping to be able to continue implementation of that housing study in 2024. I think you wanted to add on there. Kind of in the general planning budget, two things that we are kind of working on, you know, most of our budget, as you'll see, is pretty straightforward, same as previous years. No budget enhancement specific for the planning division activities. I did want to let you know, you know, last year, you did choose to fund the Parkland Impact Fee Study, so we are continuing to work on that. With the corp plan being done by the Parks Department this year, the Impact Fee Study is being a little bit delayed, because we want to get the corp plan established first. If you recall, you know, the big goal with that Impact Fee Study was to kind of balance out who's helping pay for park improvements in the city. You know, our current ordinance, unless you're subdividing a property, you don't have any park impact or park dedication fee requirements, where if you have a parcel that needs no CSM, you're exempt from it. You don't have to pay anything. You have to do a CSM or a plat required. So there's a bit of inequity there in our system of, you know, how park impact fees and parkland dedication is done. So we are continuing to move forward with that, that study of, you know, what is a more equitable way to do that? Make sure we get the appropriate money into the city for that parkland development or that land, but really balancing out how it's done and making it's a little more equitable of a system for everyone. But that will be done kind of as completion of the corp plan, you know, under state statute. That impact fee, that fee in lieu of, is very specifically tied into state law, how you do it, you need to establish the needs of your community, then the costs of implementing it are based on that corp plan. So once that's done, we'll be able to bring this back to you, anticipating potentially a joint workshop between like council, planning commission, Parks Department, as we get farther into this, so we can make sure you're all involved and aware of what's going on with that. Second piece of it, again, kind of looking at housing and how we're doing in the city is our subdivision code update. That has been going on for longer than I would like at this point. However, we have put a pause on that as well, as we do the Parkland Impact Fee, because there is a section within our subdivision code that directly talks to land dedication and fee in lieu of payments. So we want to make sure we have those numbers accurate before we finalize the subdivision code and bring that to you for adoption of updating our subdivision code. So those are two kind of big, you know, studies and projects that we'll be working on to bring to you, hopefully, in, you know, in 2024 here.
So thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. We'll move on to Assessor. So that budget is on page 147 of your handout, and I'll invite Kay and Jody to come up.
We need to do an introduction, because we haven't done that yet.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce Jody St. Charles. She's our new city assessor. I'll actually be introducing her at the November 7th council meeting, but we'll give you a sneak peek here. And then Kay Qualley is our Assistant Director of Community Development. So Kay has been helping assessors through the transition time, and Jody's kind of taking over the helms as the manager. So we have a lot going on with assessors. The big project that we'll be working on in 2024 is the revaluation. So there are some increased budget costs in the Assessor's 2024 budget, just to account for staff overtime. We have to pay the board of review members there, like per diem. We have to pay the board of review members there, like, per diem. We have to provide food for them. So, we, you know, ran through different assumptions as far as trying to figure out exactly how much, you know, we might have to, you know, pay for all those things and did include that. But with that, Jody has put together some information, and I'll let Jody just give a quick overview of the revaluation process and what you should be looking for in the future.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here. The commute this morning was a bit of a nightmare before Christmas, so I'm glad I made it. As Kelly said, there's a lot of excitement coming up in our office, but we have a great and experienced team. And we're working really hard to get some information out ahead of the revaluation process, building off of a brief segment that Mark did recently, giving a heads up about the revaluation coming. So, we don't have talking points or anything finalized yet to share with you today, but we'll be happy to share that with you in the near future, and you can contact us at any time with questions. Essentially, the revaluation will be the city staff focused on the full revaluation of the residential properties citywide, while our contracted commercial property appraiser will do that for citywide for commercial properties. The state handles manufacturing. And we have a timeline that residents, we anticipate they will receive a notice of assessment in May that'll go to all property owners with their updated value of their properties. And then, they have the opportunity to attend open book, which is a chance to talk with city staff if they are concerned about the value they were given. And if they came and somebody in the office found that there was some kind of error or oversight, then those property owners would get a change notice sometime in June. And then, if they did attend and the city stood by our valuation, then they may choose to take that to the board of review. And if they had, either way, whatever happens at the board of review in July, they would get a notice in August. And then, the tax bills that'll be sent out in December, of course, will have the updated property values, so.
So, this is, the city did, I'd say, a kind of a small, slight adjustment revaluation in 2017. But 2005 was really the most recent kind of large overall city one. And this is something, the previous city assessor, we were gonna look at, starting to do it in 2019, 2020, and then COVID happened and those housing prices kind of went through the roof. And we wanted to make sure that wasn't, you know, a one-off. We wanted to see if the market would settle a little bit. Really hasn't, so. But we figured, you know, 2024 would be a good year to do it, so that's what we've been planning for the past couple of years. So, our goal, like what Jody said, is to give you information when you have residents that may call you, is we're gonna start to do more public information, a campaign. We're working with Ashgash Media. We're gonna do all different types of media sources to make sure that we're getting information to people, so they're aware. But as counselors, we want to make sure that, you know, we give you talking points so you have enough information to, you know, answer the residents here in the city that may come to you with questions or concerns. I think the first piece of media that our residents will get is they're gonna be getting something in their water bill later this fall, early winter. And then, after that, in early January, February, March, we'll really start getting more information out. So, we're trying to be really proactive. There's gonna be, you know, changes in the value. We know that. But as that handout that Jody passed out, the little visual on the back, you'll see just because your assessed value goes up, doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go up that much or, you know, that percentage amount. So, that's really kind of the message that we want to provide to people, so they have all the information they need when they receive that first notice in May. So, if there's no other questions, you'll be hearing more from Jody and staff about, you know, providing information, and you'll be meeting Jody again on November 7.
Thank you.
And I'd encourage council, and if you want more copies of these, this information that Jody and her staff put together is really what we were looking for, that proactive stuff that Kelly was talking about, getting the public to understand that revale doesn't mean tax increase and trying to get that.
Yes.
Tax increase comes down to the seven of you. Don't want to put too much pressure on you. But there is often a temptation to say, oh, the value's going up, so let's just keep the tax rate, keep the tax rate the same. That would be insane, and I would not recommend that. What the council's been doing in recent years, focusing on the levy increase and saying, how much can we, how much do our taxpayers want to and can absorb? Think about you looking at your tax bill. You compare what the tax bill was last year to this year. If it goes up $1, somebody's gonna complain. But it should be $1 based on the decision from the seven of you, not a decision based on some manipulation of a formula. And I think this example is outstanding in its ability to communicate to people that your value can go up 40% and your tax bill can remain the same. That, and again, that'll come down to you and probably this time next year, because they'll get the revale done, and there'll be a lot of people freaking out because their value went up $40,000 or 40%. Just know that our goal here is to do this type of communication, and if you can assist us with that as you get calls, please do that, and please don't be shy about referring it to Jody. This will be your trial by fire.
Throw one in the lines, Doc.
I know Jody's up to it, and her staff will be able to manage this quite well.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jody. Next, we'll talk about our inspections division. That's on page 417 of your book. Our inspections division is an enterprise fund. We have two different funds within inspections. We have just kind of the regular inspections services, and then we do have our weights and measures, which we're required to do per state statute. So, really, for inspection services, we have no major changes going on. Obviously, there's a lot of strategic plan connections with maintaining, you know, customer service as far as reviewing plans, completing inspections in a certain amount of days. And that's something, you know, City Manager Roloff started this position, really took a look at the inspections division, the approval process, and I think we've made great strides. So, I think we'll continue to do it this year. We've implemented a few new initiatives. Kay has been a part of that, working with the inspections team. Kay, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the new initiatives, like with the E Plan and?
So, we made a shift to, away from a previous contractor, to a group that is doing the commercial plan inspections, reviews. And it's saving money. It's increased the, or increased the turnaround time. Contractors are able to, and developers are able to ask some kind of softball questions prior to submittals. A couple of those developers that were scoffers are now believers, besides returning some funds to the overall enterprise fund. So, this has been a triple win for the department, so all participants have been very supportive of it.
So, you know, our income for inspection services, obviously, we want to make sure that we have enough funds for a rainy day fund. That's the big, you know, goal for us every year. So, we have a very healthy fund balance right now, just over $2 million. So, you know, we don't know what the market is going to do. We're seeing a little bit, you know, lower residential. I know the multifamily housing, we've definitely had a boom in the past couple of years. I know that it's a little bit more difficult for them to receive funding right now. We've been hearing that all over the region from the different developers we've been working with. Commercial seems to be still going well and industrial also. Right now, you know, we're, we might come in a little bit lower as far as revenue compared to last year, but we've had record kind of breaking revenue the past three years. So, we'll, you know, we'll see what happens, but, you know, we'll adjust our budget accordingly. And like I said, we have that rating day fund to make sure that we have the funds to sustain the department, the division, to ensure that we can complete our tasks.
I would just echo that, because one of the things that, when I first got here, it was when 2008 hit, and the inspections went down, but the work of the inspections division never stopped because there's still things they need to do following up after a building permit is paid for. There's still a lot of lingering work. This truly is an enterprise fund. It was set up like a business. And I had, I worked in a city several times where we had a contract assessor, excuse me, a contract inspector, and when things went south on the economy, it's like, well, we can't do this work anymore. It's like, you guys collected the fee a couple of years ago. You still have work to do. And, I mean, some of them wanted to walk away. Contractually, they were obligated to continue the work. Similarly, our folks are still obligated to continue that work. The purpose of this fund is to anticipate that when the economy goes through a down cycle, as it will, as it did in 2008, that this inspections division will be able to continue to maintain that level of service, because they've built up a fund balance to enable them to continue to do that regardless. And I think that's really good. And I do want to tell a story, because Kay talked about it. We're very proud of the whole commercial inspection program. We've got a new contractor, and that was just a natural progression. It'd been a contractor that I'd worked with for years. These guy said, it's time to make a change, and it was the right thing to do. Kelly and I were at, with a prospect a few weeks ago, and WEDC was there. And WEDC doesn't necessarily get into the weeds on what we do. When we explained to this prospective business that we could turn around that commercial plan review in five days, they were surprised. The prospect was surprised, which, that was the reaction we wanted to get out of them. But as I watched the WEDC people, and their eyes opened up, they're like, what? You're lucky if you get it within 30 days, and you're probably really lucky in 30 days.
From the state.
From the state, and you probably get it in 45 days and probably be satisfied, and we do it in five days. We beat the pants off of anybody that wants to do commercial plan reviews in the entire state.
Yeah, we're one of.
Because these guys get the right contractor to do it. We don't tell that story enough, and I just wanted you to know that what we do is better than anybody in the state, bar none.
Yeah, we're one of 2% of municipalities in the state that have the ability, be certified by the state to review the building HVAC plumbing plans in-house, and then with this new contract, fire suppression system plans, too. So, like I said, we try to look for different ways to improve the process for our, you know, developers and contractors here in the city, just to make it easier. That's the big thing. Time is money. So, we're always looking for ways to make it easier for folks. So, with that, like I said, inspections, otherwise, you know, we're continuing with code enforcement. That's another big aspect of it. So, we have somebody full-time, and with the wonderful See Click Fix app, we get quite a few complaints on a daily basis. I know that, because I get all the emails for our department. But, you know, we're out there, and that's a full-time position doing that. And then, even in the summer, a lot of our other inspect, and building system inspectors are helping out, because there's so many.
One quick note about that. As pursuant to the conversation about housing rehabilitation earlier, code enforcement, a lot of code enforcement relates to there's siding off of a building, and there's a roof that needs replacing, there's windows that are boarded up. You know, programming that can help with solutions in that way, that doesn't expend labor in the legal department and in the inspections department, going to court and harassing people to get things fixed, because we click through that, just like we do with building permits, does have an impact. So, anyway, thanks for the quick insertion.
And that's a good, good point. All of our departments or divisions are very related. And when our code enforcement officers out there and is citing somebody or giving them a violation notice, we also follow up and say, hey, we have these programs. So, it really helps everybody, you know, to be able to offer some assistance to folks that maybe can't afford to do it, because we do get that a lot, too, unfortunately. So, thank you.
I know, code enforcement probably isn't the most popular person. The See Click Fix thing is awesome, and I do think that they're, they follow up very well. I think they're professional, so. And we've had a few complaints in the past about our code enforcement person, but I think they're doing a great job.
It's not a glamorous job. It's, yeah, it's a thankless job, and it's tough. But we try to do the best we can and try to work with people, because the ultimate goal is just to get it cleaned up. So, we try to work with them just to accomplish that.
I can throw out one more kudos. I've been living in my house for 15 years, and the advancements that you guys have made in the permitting process, you know, you can do a lot of it digitally. You can just send pictures. You can, the inspections crew is really good at getting back, like, hey, I'm thinking this, does this work? No, but you could do this. So, the improvement is remarkable over the last 15 years that I've seen.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And fortunately, we are ahead of the wave as far as doing a lot virtual or digitally. You know, we don't accept paper plans, just because we don't have space to put them. But before COVID, everything was, could be done online. So, we were really, it was pretty seamless to go virtual and keep things running while everything was on lockdown. So, we try to move with the times and try to give people, you know, the resources they need and to work with them. So, appreciate that feedback. I will pass that on. Thank you. So, excellent. Well, moving on from inspections, then, we'll move to our last division, which is economic development. Economic development, we have, as you see on there, we have a lot of different funds, but a lot of them are just very, you know, individualized, just of certain tasks that we do. So, really, from an economic development standpoint, we don't have any brand-new projects that we're including in the basic economic development budget, just our, you know, our projects that we work on annually, our redevelopment projects, land acquisition, housing. A lot of those funds come from the CIP that we do have included for our department on page 453 of the book also. But we do have, as I think, Russ, you had talked about the tax incremental districts. We have a budget for each of those, starting on page 287 through 377. So, there's one for each budget, or there's a budget for each TID. And I think, Russ, you have a snapshot of all the TIDS on page 287. Did we want to talk about that at all?
No, I guess, I was talking to the city manager when we were looking at your planning for future closures. If you go to page 270, we have a listing of all the tax increment districts, their termination dates.
Right after the first capital project tab.
Yeah.
Okay.
The projected fund balance at the end of 2023, and then what our projections are for termination. Again, this is based on assumptions at this point, but that's what we're looking at. It's kind of forward-looking.
So, you can get an idea. There's some negative fund balances, and there's a couple of funds that I know Kelly's gonna tell you about. But for the most part, ever since we've turned over to pay-as-you-go, the fund balances of those funds are generally gonna land in a very good spot, because we only pay out, we pay out less than what we take in.
What we have, yeah. And as Mark mentioned, the two kind of problem children are TID 23, TID 26. That's a Southwest Industrial Park, the latest phase, and then Aviation Business Park, our collaborative project with Winnebago County. Those are both industrial parks, which we created a TID. We borrowed the funds and then had, the intent was to rely on the increment that would be generated, pay back the loan. We have development going on in TID 23, slower than anticipated, but at TID 26, we still do not have any development in there. So, obviously, if you're from a staffing perspective, we're doing what we can to try and encourage development in that area. We do have the opportunity to extend both of those TIDS another six years. So, we most likely will be doing that to try to see if we can get more growth. And then, the other one that does have a negative balance, it's not, it's merged, TID 36, but that will not be negative. They just haven't completed all their phases, so that will not be negative. That will be positive, and that, of course, is a pay-as-you-go, too, so. But all the other ones, TID 20, starting with TID 12, and looking at the next 10 years where we'll have some closures, you know, we will have some injections into our Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. And then, of course, you know, that project fund balance at termination, those, that balance will be split with the four different taxing jurisdictions. And every time we make a new TID, it's kind of a different percentage of, you know, what the different taxing jurisdictions get. But typically, it's like maybe 30% for the city, 30% for school district.
Probably 40, 40, isn't it?
Hmm, not quite, yeah. I mean, it varies, but 33% maybe. So, staff has done some calculations just to get an initial idea of how much we'd have coming in the next 10 years from the cash balance at the end of the TID, and then, of course, that additional year for keeping it open for affordable housing activities.
And I would give Kelly and her staff credit. They've also had discussions with the school district, because as the school district's doing their capital planning, we've told them about our anticipated closures and what fund balance might be available. That's, so, it's, you know, it's more than 30, but it's not as much as 40, like I was saying. It's probably somewhere in between. But the school district is aware of these, and so they're incorporating this into their cash flow projections. You may recall that when we did close TIFF 7, which was, we called it the mothership of all TIFFs, that is what money was able, when we distributed money to the school district, that's actually what funded Lakeside School, because they didn't have to borrow a nickel for Lakeside School, because they had, they had this cash infusion based on a TIFF closure. And that helped a lot. I mean, from the school district wanting to get, build support, they were able to build support by demonstrating, hey, we paid cash for Lakeside. So now, Lakeside folks, we need to do Oaklawn, we need to do, you know, the other schools that have been done in the last couple of years. So, we worked very closely with the school district to help them with their financial planning as well. And I think that's a great collaboration between our two entities.
Absolutely. So, for economic development, that's all I really had. Everything else is, it's pretty much status quo for the next year. So, if there's any other questions or comments.
There's one other thing I wanted to point out with the TIFFs, and it's, yeah, we do have the challenges with aviation and Southwest, and we're keeping an eye on that every year, and we'll continue to do that. The one I really want to point out is the Oshkosh Avenue Corridor. When we did the Oshkosh Corporation TIFF, TIFF 34, the global HQ, the global headquarters, that is just for Oshkosh Corporation, the development agreement we have. We created a separate TIFF at the same time. We recognized that there would be spin-off economic benefit. And the council at the time identified the Oshkosh Avenue Corridor as something that we wanted to improve. And if you look at the cash balance in there right now, we are nearly, we're projecting nearly $1.5 million of cash in that TIFF. One of the projects we have in that project plan is the reconstruction of the Oshkosh Avenue-Sawyer Street intersection. You know just what a mess that is. I think that's probably universally agreed, that that is like the worst intersection ever. The idea is eventually making that a true T-intersection, where Rainbow Drive would get moved to align with Sawyer, and so you'd have a regular, normal intersection. Thank you for the facial response.
But I like getting stuck in no man's land.
I know.
Can you get a T-bone?
Mine is right.
It helps you ask more questions. What? Why?
Buried in our C I P is this, is that intersection to get done. And I think, you know, we're going to be starting on the beginnings of getting that project done. I think we owe it to the public, and we owe it to all of ourselves to fix that intersection. And it's because of this TIFF, the value in that TIFF grows every time, even up, or excuse me, going south, down on Keller as well. We included part of that. So, like, the-
Like the bank, the bank going around the corner there, and I think it goes south to Sawyer Creek.
Yeah, I think it goes all the way, includes the old Kmart, which is the-
U-Haul.
The U-Haul. So, all that's included in there, plus all these grand openings, or the, you know, the Mr. Brews that was here the other day to get their liquor license, which now there's War Left Man. But that's all done with that in mind. And eventually, it's going to help fund getting that Oshkosh Avenue Corridor, which is really our newest gateway. So, and that's all due to the foresight that I think Kelly and Ellen before her said, we got to get this, and we got to get the corridor done, and that includes this intersection. So, I'm excited that the possibility exists here. And keep an eye on that fund balance, because we're going to start chipping away at that, and we'll be coming to you for a budget amendment. I don't want to do anything right now. We got it in the C I P, but we're going to start spending money to get that intersection done.
So, we can use those funds before termination? Or how does that work?
Oh, in fact, we have to use it before termination.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, yeah.
If it's in the project plan in the district.
Okay.
I'm really excited about that. And I think, you know, we could see that intersection done by the end of this decade.
And RDA has proactively been acquiring properties for about 10 years as they became available. So, that vacant land there that you see, that's actually RDA-owned. RDA owns the bait shop, if you don't know that.
We own a bait shop, yeah.
We rent it, but it's a great amenity for the, you know, for the launch. So, it's a no-brainer. But we have been actively acquiring properties in there to prepare for this.
Carl's question for those newest members, because it's a good question. Yeah, the T I Ds have the ability to take on debt with future revenues to pay it off, and/or then use the current revenues to take on future projects, or current and future projects. So, that's how, Compass Way, is that the-
Yeah.
Compass Way is also this industrial park. That's the debt, that's the negative amount here, is we paid for that, that road to go through there, and to do all that in anticipation of, you know, future growth in that space.
In this case, I think we're going to be able to pay cash.
Yeah.
Cash is better.
Cash is always, cash is king.
And we'll look for a grant too first. So, we'll do what we can. But that's all I really had for economic development, community development as a whole. I don't know if anybody has any other follow-up questions.
Okay, you're still going to talk about bid, or?
Would you like to?
Yeah, I think I should.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
The bid made a presentation to the council last week, and originally, they had included a request for $100,000 of general fund monies, of city money, to fund the bid for the goals that they were talking about. They haven't changed their goals, but I discouraged them from applying for an extra $100,000. Frankly, I think the bid should, if they're going to want some additional monies, they need to tax their own members. Their argument is that the bid itself is very geographically limiting, even though downtown Oshkosh is much larger than the bid itself. And I understand the dilemma that the bid has, because to expand the bid, you need to get a greater, you need to get 50% of the larger number. And I don't think they're convinced that they can get that. So, they're looking to perhaps get voluntary donations or promotion revenue to be able to do that. That is not unlike what Nina has done with Future Nina, or Appleton's done with A D I, Appleton Downtown Incorporated. Actually, those entities preceded the creation of a bid. And then, for example, Nina called me up, it was shortly after I had gotten here, and Future Nina had been in existence for years. They said, we're thinking of doing a bid to supplement Future Nina's money. In this case, the logic is reversed. They want to get a nonprofit entity started, as Jessica had explained to you. But getting that started is the tough part for them. And so, they were looking for seed money. We had the discussion earlier with Go H and I, so Kelly's actually had to go through two of these, where you've got entities that are looking for seed money. And that's, that's difficult to do, because how do you wean them off the seed money? And you had a great discussion about that. This is another one with the bid. Now, I discouraged them from asking for the money, because number one, we didn't have it. I didn't want to put you on the spot to say no to them, and I figured I'd shoulder that and said, no. And I discouraged them from doing it. However, we did have a discussion, and you may or may not have heard what came out of it, but they're going to apply for ARPA funds under the nonprofit portion. The council had said 75% of it goes to infrastructure. Russ had reported that. That's pretty much exhausted now. That we, inside staff, that's Russ's money. Russ's money is pretty much committed. There's another $5 million, which we affectionately call Mark's money, which were the nonprofits. The council has allocated about half of that. That's about $5 million. They've allocated half, you've allocated half of it. So, there's still about $2.5-plus million remaining in that fund. And I've been very stingy in taking a look at that. If you accept the premise that downtown was significantly impacted by COVID with the number of stores that were impacted, and the monies for nonprofits also include businesses that have been impacted by the, by COVID, I think the bid can make a reasonable case to the council that funding for them would be appropriate. Now, I will not make you any promises that after three years, they won't ask for money again, but I think it's worthy of it. They've submitted an application. I've reviewed it. I've given them some comments back. I think they need to make a case to how they're going to live after the three years. As I'm looking at Joe now, because Joe tossed that out in the case of Go H and I, I think the exact same thing applies with them. Now, I know the bid, and they will, they will ask for money in three years. I don't want to make any, you know, any illusions. But I suggested to them that, given the fact that, according to the rules, I'm glad Russ is sitting down right now, he, I already told him about this, that we have to commit the monies by the end of '24. We don't have to spend it by the end of '24. But I think you can make a case for $100,000 for the bid for '24, '25, '26, and then, they would be able to get that nonprofit off the ground and get that funding flow, funding cash flow in there, so that they, we could wean them off of the exact same monies. I think it's worthy of council to consider, and once I think their application is all set, I'll be bringing that forward. But I want them, I want them to, number one, get a plan that says how we're going to wean ourselves off of this money, and make a good, strong case of how they've been impacted. That part, I think they'll do, be able to do pretty well. If you think about how downtown was impacted, there have been plenty of businesses that have closed, and I think, I think they can make that case. But they also have to make a case of how they can wean themselves from it. And I don't think they want to necessarily do that, but it's like, the purpose of ARPA money is not to provide a permanent cash flow. So, I see some quizzical looks. I'm not discouraged by those looks, but I just wanted to at least let you know, that's why they didn't ask for the $100,000, because I told them straight up, with the bid, you can only vote in favor of their plan or vote it down. You cannot amend their plan. And I didn't want them to come asking for $100,000, because I said, I will recommend that the council voted down. We've never done that. We've threatened it before, but we've never done it, because we normally have come to some reasonable-
Middle ground.
Middle ground, yeah. We've come to some reasonable middle ground. $100,000 with so many other needs. You heard Lynn yesterday talk about her needs. I mean, that's, that's probably the number-one staffing need I think we have right now. How can I look somebody like Lynn in the eye and her staff when we're given $100,000 in general fund tax money to the bid that hasn't increased their rates in years? So, bids heard this, heard my lecture before, so, and now you've heard it. But I think they, I think they can make a case for ARPA money, and again, the nonprofit slash Mark ARPA money, as opposed to the Russ C I P money. I think there's, I think there's at least a valid case. So, I wanted that out there, because it's not in the budget.
It's not, and also not included as our in-kind cost too, to the bid. There's quite a substantial amount of in-kind cost that the city provides to the bid every year too. That's not a cash check, but it's-
Yeah, they were using the argument that, oh, all these other cities support bids. And then ironically, they looked at the main staff to the bid, the city staff to the bid is John Zarotti, and they're like, John, you need to do this and do that. And I said, you are using city staff? You can't sit there and say, oh, we don't get any city support, when you just directed one of our staff members to go do something. So, I had some discussions with proper delegation of city staff. But be that as it may, we do provide a significant amount of benefit to the bid. But I recognize the bid is important for the downtown. It is. They're focusing on marketing. They want to do more of it, but they need to get beyond their very restrictive boundaries. A nonprofit, if somebody wants to sort of do a pay-as-you-go type of approach to the, to the bid with a nonprofit entity, I've seen it work elsewhere. It works very well. It's just that they did it in reverse order. That's nobody's fault. That's just the way it happened. But seed money, not permanent funding, is my recommendation.
Yeah, what do you got, Carl, of both one?
I just-
I got intrigued.
Yeah, I don't want to go too deep in the woods in this, and you just kind of touched on it, but like, this feels a whole lot like using ARPA for a continuing expense, and that, that's my quizzical look, is how can we commit this one-time funding to an ongoing expense?
We should probably be pretty clear that it is, maybe we call it seed money, when we, I mean, even when the agenda and the application comes before, to be very clear that this is one-time seed expense, not an ongoing.
We do that often, and we actually follow, the Community Foundation is very, very good at that. They will make a donation to get seed money, a pilot project, to get things off the ground. The Kinsel Foundation did it with Go E D C. They gave significant amount of money, and they gave a three-year commitment. And so, that's the type of approach I'm looking at. Because you're right, it is, it is operating costs, but if they've got a plan to wean themselves, and that's why I sent the app, I sent the application back with that very comment, you got to demonstrate how you can wean yourselves from that. I'm telling you that they will still try to make a case, because I know there's a group of people within the bid that think that the city should be funding general fund money for the bid. And I, I just politely disagree with that, but I respect their, they can make a policy plea to the council that you should use tax money to support, you know, a program for downtown.
Do you consider, Mark, our operating reserves as an alternative, given I share Carl's concern about, it seems inconsistent with our ARPA policy, especially if the nonprofit doesn't exist yet? That's also a concern.
I'm not opposed to that at all, and I think that's probably amongst your wheelhouse. I think the mayor has a couple ideas he talked to me about yesterday. And I think, once you start talking about those types of things, you can throw it out, as long as, what I like better about the ARPA money is it's like, there's a defined end to the ARPA money. Fund balance might give an illusion that it'll continue after three years, and I'm just a little concerned that we, I don't want to send the wrong message. But if you can hold tough and say, three years, and we're done, I don't care what the funding source is, as long as you can hold tough, I have absolutely no concern with what you're suggesting. But the mayor has my other ideas too.
I have an off-topic question.
No, you go with your off-topic question.
With ARPA money, doesn't that have to be spent by 2026, or do we?
Yes. So, that was the idea, $100,000 in '24, '25, and '26. It meets Russ's requirement that Russ's, Russ and his staff have been looking at the evolving ARPA rules, and we have to have it committed. So, giving them a grant in '24 that is doled out in '24, ' '25, '26 will meet Russ's rules. So, and I have to respect Russ's rules. And it's Julian, it's his staff is-
It'll be the city that's on the hook.
It's the city, yeah. But we have to, so, yeah. So, the idea was, we'd be cutting them a check on January 1, '24, '25, '26.
Yeah, I guess the reason I bring it up is because we could maybe use that as, well, we can't keep tapping from this money at all. We have to spend it by 2026. I mean-
That's why I like that just a little bit. But I'm not opposed to what Mike just suggested either.
Yeah, no, I'm not either.
It's one-time monies for one-time purpose.
Mark, what are the, you know, what are the types of things that our dollars can be used for, and have there been other requests for those dollars?
I'll give you an example. Thank you. The council has awarded several grants right so far, the Boys and Girls Club, the Christine Anne Center, the Food Co-op, Advocap, and COTS. Thank you. That was my fifth, yeah. So, there were five that the council's already approved, and that's about $2.7 million of our $5.2. I mean, I'm ballparking the numbers. So, we got about $2.5 million left. So, and it's specifically for nonprofits, and it does say businesses. You can benefit businesses. Is this a business? No, it's, actually, it's a, it's a governmental entity that provides service to, to the downtown businesses. So, is this a good indirect way of helping businesses? I think it's an arguable discussion point.
And so, these are like a use-it-or-lose-it type funds also, right?
Correct.
Are we going to lose it if we don't, I mean?
Yes. I mean, we have a year to commit it.
It has to be committed by the end of 2024.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm asking is, have there been, are there other entities that we can delineate these funds to and use them without losing them?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
But the council, to date, has been restrictive in where they wanted to go to. And I've been very careful about, and I think with all the discussion we've been having about homeless, we may need to take a look at that, at those funds for that type of purpose, because our homeless problem extends beyond the day-by-day warming shelter, and I think we all recognize that. So, I'm kind of glad we, we held up. But we got a year to commit it. I mean, that's, now suddenly, it's like, oh, we really got to start- I mean, that's, now suddenly it's like, oh, we really got to start thinking about this. So I think there's some things relative to homeless that we need to take a look at. Um, and, and I, as, as the bid was making this argument for city funds, I was like, you know what? I think they're making a case without them making a case for using ARPA money. Because the downtown businesses have been impacted and I, and I can absolutely can concede that point.
Well, but anyone can make that claim.
You are correct, but I think they had some statistics about the downtown, the concentration of businesses in the downtown and the importance of the vibrancy of the downtown to our economic health.
I can talk about, sorry to cut you off, but the number of employees that have left the central city and are now working from home have had a negative financial impact on the entire downtown district. You're talking 2,000 employees that no longer work right on the river, that out of COVID, now work from home or work in a different location that are no longer spending money in our downtown. And we know from all sorts of studies and, you know, the amount of funds that people spend when they work downtown is ridiculous. That's no longer flowing down.
Well, yeah, while that may be true, a hundred thousand dollars in this other problem. And if you look at the dollars that we've spent downtown on amphitheater, the square, new main street, the sidewalks, bid, you know, taxes itself. I mean, it's just how many millions of dollars, I mean, and, and it's all good. I mean, it's worked. I'm not arguing or disputing that. All I'm saying is there's got to be some other groups out there that would love to get their hands on a hundred thousand dollars and probably do a great job with it. Can't, I'm not saying that they wouldn't. I think enough is enough.
They could apply, Mark, right? Anybody could apply. We have the public process. Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So Paul, so anybody could apply for these funds.
Yeah. And that's kind of one, I didn't know if anyone else had applied.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mark, maybe Mike, Mike had a, a plan a while back. We approved it. You want to tell them about your 75, 25?
Yeah. So the idea was 75% of it is, is designed, the 20 million is designed to go to, um, infrastructure projects that are already scored by our CIP. Um, and the, the, the logic behind the 75, 25 split was taking that 75% number, um, off of potential debt. These infrastructure projects frees up interest, roughly that 25% amount. And that was where we had the public, uh, input process for folks to apply, uh, for, for funding for nonprofits or community organizations. And I'm, I'm looking at it right now and we had, um, certain, uh, policies attached to that, that we couldn't create new programs with ongoing expenses for the city. Taking into account maintenance costs for infrastructure. And then we also have in there that we intended to spend it through 2024. So I want to caution that as well. Uh, spreading it out. Yeah, Russ is smiling, uh, but maybe we modify that policy, put that right off the bat. That's where my mind went when we, when I heard you say that three years, like that seems inconsistent with our policy. Um, so we did, we did lay out some parameters there and, and Mark spearheaded that public input process, um, where people could apply.
What process did we use to, I mean, do businesses know that this money is out there to be used?
The policy was more. It was the council that said nonprofits. So even though we're, even though support to private businesses is eligible under the ARPA laws. The, the council policy said, we want to focus on nonprofits. And given how things have evolved with homelessness, I think we need to take a look at that and what our role is. And, you know, and I certainly want to have that discussion with the county, but the county has a role on the human services side. But we all know that we're getting impacted by homelessness. Uh, and it's, it's not just in the downtown. Uh, it's not just around day by day. It's everywhere. The incident that, uh, the chief talked about with the homeless person biting, having a dog, their dog bite one of our officers. That was known, that was actually about a half mile from my house on the west side. Wasn't an east side, wasn't a downtown thing. So the homeless issues that we have are all over town. I mean, raised concern about the new four-season shelter. So we, I think we're going to find some uses for the remainder of the nonprofit money in, in some of these areas. Is the bid one of them? The seven of you can decide that, but I'm trying to get them to put together a pretty strong case to make, to make the case that seed money for ongoing operations makes sense. I'm sorry, Lakeisha, did you want to say something?
No, I said it was answered.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So the, the, and I know we're like way off topic here, but the one thing we haven't talked about because we're talking about nonprofits and, and that's the grand project. I, I don't know if that's in, I haven't looked through this.
It'll be coming up with the facilities administration in a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question to Kelly, uh, I guess similar to ARPA, um, Furnow Avenue, uh, came up yesterday during public works. Can you give some background kind of on some of the maybe economic development reasoning for that?
Absolutely. Um, the Furnow Avenue connection would be huge for our industrial parks. And I say parks, it would positively impact our north industrial park and our northwest industrial park. Um, and just for, you know, traffic movement as a whole, um, having another connection to that, um, I-45 or I-41 US Highway 45 interchange. Um, we actually also have, um, somebody that is looking at purchasing some land that's in the town of Oshkosh that would be right on that Furnow area that would have, um, quite a bit of traffic too. So, um, I think it would be an excellent use of the funds. Um, obviously I would have loved it for the Riverwalk, but this would definitely be my number two. Um, it's a project that we've been trying to do for a long time. Um, I've been trying to see if there's grants out there and everything, but, um, if we could get that project done, I think it would be huge for our community. Um, and after the Sawyer-Oshkosh Ave question, when that project is getting done, Furnow is always number two. When are we doing the Furnow connection? Uh, cause we're, we're so close, but I, it's, it's a smaller segment, but it's going to make a huge difference.
Can you, you don't have to give us like a ton of details, but can you give us a little bit more information on the individual that's looking to purchase land? What type, type of use?
Um, it actually is a private school expansion.
Okay.
So, um, while it would be tax exempt, it would be a huge quality of life impact in our area. But in the meantime, we do still have available property in our northwest industrial park. So I think having those connections would be great to, um, promote that area that we have.
Well, we've given you a lot more than you were probably bargaining for, but I think those, you know, it's funny.
We have our fingers in everything, so.
Decisions on those two, Go H and I and bid were, were huge issues. And I appreciate council listening to us on this issue, mostly listening to me. But these are issues that Kelly and I have been talking about for months.
Mm-hmm. Years.
Years.
I will be back this afternoon. If you have any questions before that, please let me know. Otherwise I'll, we'll see you in a little bit then. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
We're running, uh, quite a bit early. That doesn't mean that Mr. Fitzpatrick gets more minutes.
Just, that's a little hint, huh?
Thanks, Joe.
John, is there a, is there a natural point at which maybe in the middle of yours would be a good break time possibly?
Sure. We have, uh, just a whole variety of budgets, I think, as some of you know, so we can break anytime.
Forty-five minutes, right around the 10 o'clock, if there's a, a natural break.
Maybe HR, it sounds like you, that might be if we get through HR.
Yeah, we're gonna, I thought we could do HR first. HR and, um.
But then we will break.
Worker comp, safety.
Yeah, yeah. That's all.
Or you could just be done for.
That's all.
You know, maybe I should just ask the council too. Some of my staff were watching the, the budget presentations yesterday and noticed that some of the department heads brought candy. I see some of that. They, they asked me if it would be appropriate to bring, um.
Alcohol?
Uh, Bloody Marys and Virgin Marys this morning. So, well, that is an option for you. I didn't bring them into the room itself. But if you're thirsty, let me know.
Bring it up.
Okay. All right.
Administrative Services.
All right. Well, Kelly's a tough act to follow, um, but we have some exciting things going on in administrative services. And, uh, my staff and I are very proud of all the work that we're able to be working on right now. I know you're a little bit pressed for time based on my observation of the, of the work yesterday in regard to, you know, freeing up some extra time. So I'm going to minimize my comments and maximize the comments that, um, my division heads and staff are going to be able to provide. But I thought because there are some new council members, it might be helpful to just introduce, as we go through my budgets, uh, the people that are, are working in those areas, if you're not familiar with them. So Michelle Benke is our HR manager. I think you've met her. And, uh, Paul Greeninger is going to be joining us in a little bit and he's our safety and risk management officer. So just so you have a name with a face when they, when we get started. So the first budget is HR and I think that is on page 67. I think, well, just try to go through the book as it's naturally laid out because we have a lot of budgets. That way it's a little easier for council just to, to get to the next one. So, um, Michelle, I'll let you take HR away.
All right. Thank you. Um, from a strategic planning goal, obviously enhance the effectiveness of our government. We focus on recruit, retain, engage and recognize employees. And of course, develop future leaders and volunteers and reconnect with alumni. Um, in 2023, we did implement our classification and compensation study for our non-represented employees. Planned and executed an employee survey and of course have been working with community development and other areas in order to maximize employee development, support efficiencies, et cetera. Um, in 2024, we are facilitating our collective bargaining process. And, uh, we will be looking at our performance evaluation, looking to improve and evolve our process. And of course, uh, work cooperatively with finance to augment our payroll and benefit structures and processes. So a few things we're looking to do this year. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll just add, um, you know, just a, a side light with the performance evaluation process. After X10 and 32, back in 2012, we had to consolidate a lot of, um, represented employees into our non-rep ranks. So that was a process for, uh, our, uh, class and comp study. But also, um, a lot of those folks didn't have performance evaluations. So it was the first time that we ever, um, forayed into that world for folks that were previously represented. And because there was a lot of fractionalization, uh, that was taking place, we thought it important to try to come up with a common pay plan and also a common instrument for performance evaluation. So we had kind of a one-size-fits-all, uh, methodology for those reasons. But, you know, as time has gone on and, you know, in consultation with Michelle and her folks, I think the instrument that we have, because we have such a varied workforce, uh, it, it, it doesn't really fit for all the different types of employees. So one of the things I know Michelle is going to work on and her staff in exploring different, um, instruments is just trying to tailor it to different employee groups a little bit more, maybe be more competency-based. So I think that's an exciting project that we'll be working on in the future.
And it's not on here, but recruit, recruit, recruit. Um, obviously recruitment has been a huge focus, uh, in the last few years. And every year it seems to get to be more and more, um, of our, our time. So, uh, overall in HR, there's not a lot going on budget-wise. Um, again, health insurance, it all depends on who's on the plan, what particular year. The contractual agreement is up. Next year is a strategic planning year for all of council and that goes into my budget. So that's the, um, largest increase in my budget really is just in every other year where we add stra- strategic planning in there. Other than that, um, few increases, you know, costs are going up for everything and I'll talk more about that in my future budgets as well. Background checks are going up, um, physicals are going up. Basically everything that costs money to recruit people is going up. So that's, uh, you know, certainly affects our increases a little bit for human resources.
Yeah, just a few more comments associated with what Michelle talked about. I, I was observing you talking to different departments about staffing and recruitment yesterday too. And, um, just to let you know, our, I think our staff were going through a period, our, our managers and supervisors where they were kind of freaking out a little bit with, uh, the great resignation and, you know, baby boomers retiring and, um, but we had dialogue with them to try to illustrate to them that, um, you know, this is a phenomenon that everybody's going through. And, you know, Michelle has extensive experience in the private sector and shared with them the idea that in some private sector areas that turnover is, is high as 40 and in some cases 70%. Uh, our turnover rate, I think when we discussed it with them is about 9%. Um, and, you know, the supervisors historically were used to hiring people off the street, not having to train them, plugging them in. And so it's been an adjustment period for our supes. You know, they have to understand that the world's changing and their jobs are changing a little bit too. And we have to spend more time developing our folks. It's a lot easier to have a known commodity and then, uh, advance them internally than it is to select people outside. So I think they're doing a great job adjusting to it, but it was an adjustment period. And strategic planning, uh, I think we're at a point where we're securing our, um, our facilitator. So we're going to get going on that hopefully maybe at the end of this year with some of the back, background data collection stuff. And then, you know, ramp up a little bit in the early part of January and then probably be talking to the council about it after the election in April. So that's the plan to try to get something put together so it can be adopted before next budget cycle. So we can sync up the plan with, uh, strategic management. That's the whole idea. So Michelle, anything else?
No, I think that's plenty. Any questions on the HR budget?
Two, two questions. One, you mentioned strategic planning. Um, is it anticipated that we're going to try and do that early in 2024? Have we, have we started looking for a scheduling of that already?
I think, uh, we had one year where we tried to do it early prior to the election process. And I think that was a little bit anomalous, but I think there's some things we can do, um, early in terms of data collection. But the idea is for us to get together with council, depending upon what happens after the election, you know, after April. That particular component of it, because we're thinking about having a focus group, uh, maybe talking to the community a little bit more in addition to our citizen survey. Um, we meet with our supervisors and department heads to get their ideas. We do traditionally a little bit of gap analysis in terms of, okay, here's kind of what we were trying to work on and here's, uh, let's talk about how we did. And then the way we try to reconcile that in the strategic planning context is to, uh, try to focus on those areas that are of high importance and maybe that we need to work on a little bit more because we're not as, being as successful. So we try to collect data and then try to generate, um, goals and action items that support those goals with the department heads, supes, focus groups. And then ultimately we meet with council for those people that haven't had a chance to do that. Um, department heads and council meet for a, uh, a little retreat day. Talk about all that data information, what their ideas are, and then try to come up with a plan going forward. So that's really the process. There's a lot of steps. Um, but that's what we're thinking about right now.
And then I think it's appropriate now, but health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
You good to talk about that right now?
Sure, absolutely.
It's really not the health insurance part of it. It's really more our clinic, uh, the three waves. I think it's a fantastic asset that, that we have. Um, it's always interesting to, to see differences between public and private in terms of the rates, the increases, where things are going. Utilization of that is, is really key to controlling our costs in the short term and long term. Just how that's going, is there assets? Is there anything that that needs in terms of, you know, growing that to make sure that we can control as much as we can control to keep those, you know, those costs, health insurance and wages are our biggest, our biggest two. And if we can control one, it'd really be nice.
Right. I'm glad you asked that. And before I turn it over to Michelle, I'll just say that, um, we very much appreciate the support of the council when we, um, established the clinic and established the consortium with the county and the school district. Um, I think we were the first city in the state of Wisconsin to, to have a near-sight clinic, although the private sector has had them for years and years. But it's really helped us. It's really helped us, uh, defray healthcare costs. We were, there was a period of time when we actually, uh, deviated from being self-funded and went fully insured because a lot of insurance companies wanted to just showcase us to their other, uh, clients. And they gave us a reduced rate. and they gave us reduced rates. So when we were going through a period of time when healthcare was increasing about eight percent, we were actually decreasing. So now we're, we're not the new shiny penny because other communities have caught up to us, and they have near-site and onsite clinics. So we're back to self-funding because that's a better vehicle for us and for the council in terms of, you know, fiscal certainty. But I think it's still being very successful, and Michelle can talk about some of the plans that we have for expansion, actually.
Right. I, I love talking about the clinic because I think it has been extremely successful, and we're, we're finding more and more people wanting to utilize it. We did switch our provider a little over a year ago, so we've got about our first year report earlier this summer because they took over April first of two thousand twenty-two. And we were, we did save money. Their goal was to break even year one, again, brand-new provider, and I think we estimated approximately a hundred thousand in savings. We anticipate those savings going up every year. We did add a physical therapist this last year, and that has been hugely successful to the point where they would love to add a second one. Our utilization's there. The outcomes have been really great. We've even found that people who go to our physical therapist tend to get better faster. They need less appointments to get to end of healing. It's been a wonderful success. We added a physician, a M.D., last year, this last year as well, which I think has attracted more individuals to the clinic that are, you know, although nurse practitioners are awesome, and I personally utilize a nurse practitioner as my primary care, having that physician there has been extremely attractive to people as well. So we continue to see increases in the utilization, and we are actually talking with the county and the school district about expanding the clinic. We are out of room. We would love to add a second physical therapist, but I don't think she wants to work in the parking lot. She or he, I'm sorry. I don't think they want to work in the parking lot. So we are exploring ways to expand the clinic so we can have more square footage and of course, add more services, which we believe will continue to mitigate costs to our health insurance program. Especially being self-funded, the more we can mitigate our costs, obviously, that's a direct benefit to our, our fund and directly affects how much the city has to put into that fund as well as how much our employees have to pay toward that fund. So there's a lot of exciting things going on, and I do hope to be talking to you guys about expansion.
It's good to hear.
As a county employee and having gone to the clinic many times, I've nothing but positive experiences there.
It's just, it's, especially locally, healthcare providers, the changes in the marketplace that are occurring, you know, the number of letters that continually to be sent out, you know, your provider's leaving, your provider's leaving. To have somewhere you just know you can go is really reassuring for a lot of folks, and, and most don't go often enough. So having that, you know, available to the city associates and county and school district is really important.
Right. And the ability for our employees to get in quickly is amazing. I mean, it can be several weeks or even months to get in to a doctor at times, and normally, our staff can see our employees, if not same day, within the next day or two. But I'm very impressed, and there are certainly things that if I would not have been able to get into the clinic, I would have had to go to an urgent care or something, and I, I think many of our employees have expressed the same thing.
I would say it was part of the clinic design really to make it as convenient as possible for employees. And, you know, with that, we, we felt very strongly that we wanted to have the ability to dispense medication there. So if you go there with your, your sick child and your child, you know, not only gets a chance to get diagnosed, but then the parent can grab the medication, and that medication is provided free right there for them, and they can take it, provide it to their child right away. So we looked at the most commonly dispensed medications and set up the clinic in that way.
I think it's evolved because, for the better, because originally, I think people just looked at it kind of like that is sort of the alternative to urgent care. And now they're seeing, oh, I can get my regular, you know, primary care out of this clinic. And I think at first, there was a hesitancy to do that, and there wasn't a real doctor, even though, you know, how much do you really see a, a real doctor when you go get a lot of these services anyway? The nurse practitioner was great, and we heard, we got such positive feedback. But once they brought in the physician, I think now it's like, this really is a full-service clinic, and there's a physical therapist, and that's, and I know the school district is wanting to direct more of their employees over to the clinic. So it's working together to meet the needs of all three of the employers here to, to get our usage down elsewhere because we, as a self-insured plan, you walk in the door and we're, we're paying the first half million dollars. Well, that's, you know, most of the services you get are, are less than a half million dollars, so we're paying for all of those. If we direct them over to the clinic, our cost under our insurance is zero because we're sending it over there. I mean, so the benefits that we're getting from this, I think we're just starting to hit our stride. And that's been with five years, five years under our belt, Michelle?
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah. And, you know, I kind of glossed over it earlier, but, you know, the council members taking a chance on this because it was a little risky, that hadn't been done very frequently in the public sector. You know, it certainly is very much appreciated. Our employees have done a good job utilizing the clinic, and that's really helped keep the, the, the costs down, so we're very grateful. Okay, anything else with HR? All right, why don't we go to the Police and Fire Commission? And that is on page one-twenty-one. So the Police and Fire Commission, for people that don't understand what this body really is, it's, it was something that was established by the state of Wisconsin in the past to try to de-politicize the oversight of police departments and, and fire departments. I'm kind of a movie buff, so I hope you can understand this reference. But if you've ever seen the movie Gangs of New York, where in that movie, what they do is they, they kind of illustrate how elected officials kind of wield police and fire departments almost like a weapon in some communities. So the principle behind the Police and Fire Commission really is to try to de-politicize that, to try to have an independent group of people that deal with staffing issues and discipline issues. Those are really the focuses of the, of the Police and Fire Commission. So it's a, it's a fairly simple budget, but as we discuss, the idea that, you know, staffing and turnover is ramped up a little bit. Michelle talks to the Police and Fire Chiefs, and we also have dialogue with employees about impending retirements. And, and that really drives this budget. So Michelle, you want to talk a little bit about what you've heard from that?
Right. Well, as we've seen, we have definitely had more recruiting for Police and Fire over the last couple of years. And basically, the costs are going up. I have ramped this budget up pretty considerably, anticipating even more recruitment in two thousand twenty-four as well as, you know, background checks that we've implemented, that we've transitioned from internal to a, a external source. Not having people within the police department do them has definitely affected this budget. So basically, just increasing background check costs, increasing psychological costs, increasing physicals, drug screens, and more people is really simplistically what it, what it, why it's increasing.
Any questions about that budget?
I would just add, because I think Fitz and Michelle put more of the HR spin on the Police and Fire Commission. The Police and Fire Commission also exists to take complaints that may require a review by a citizens group. To date, that, we, we, we get very few, and usually they get resolved at the police level, but that still exists. We get them every once in a while, and, but that is also a role for the Police and Fire Commission that they, they're, I mean, you hear the term citizens review board. They're citizens, and they're, they're to take complaints. Fortunately, I think because of our accreditation with our police and to, different than accreditation, but what our fire department does, you know, the, the complaints are relatively minor, and they get resolved administratively before they even have to go to the PFC. And I think that's a, that's a, something that we should be proud about.
Right. One area we could have talked, we started to get off a little bit on the clinic, but there is this budget, Russ has a budget in here. It's called the Employee Benefits Fund, and that's on page four-twenty-two. And that really just captures, I believe, some of the costs associated with Three Waves and also some other health insurance-related budgets, costs, I should say. So I'm, I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier, but.
That's where all the health insurance comes out of.
Yeah, so it's, it's a way to just segregate that. You know, back in the day, when I first got here, we had maybe not paid as close attention to health insurance as we needed to. And, you know, there were things that were done, like giving premium holidays to employees, and employees love that. But we had, over a two-year period, a fifty-two percent increase in the, in the premium. And I remember being in this room, this whole two, these whole two rooms were filled with employees, and they were like, hey, what's going on? And, you know, are you using monies that we're paying for insurance because you're self-funded to buy dump trucks and stuff like that? And I was like, no, we're not doing that. And we're segregating these funds so you can understand, you know, what the costs are, and so we can be more transparent going forward. And so that was, you know, kind of the, the impetus for separating these funds, you know, because of some of the concerns that were brought forward by the employees back at that time. So that's really the purpose, one of the purposes of keeping it separated in addition to some of the other things that Russ has to be careful about. So any questions about that budget? All right. Okay, now I think maybe we can get into some of the more safety and worker comp related things. So I'll just ask Paul Greeninger to step up. Paul's our Safety and Risk Management Officer. And just as an aside, Paul crushed me in fantasy football. It came down to last night. So he's, he's feeling pretty, pretty good today about it, and I'm not, but.
If you mess with the bull, you get the horns.
That's right. That's right. Paul's also, as an aside, a Minnesota Vikings fan avidly, and I think that serves to illustrate.
I put my costume on today. I'm a disgruntled Viking fan ever since Kirk went down.
When he goes to the different departments, he's got a Minnesota Vikings clipboard, you know, and the employees enjoy that. And sometimes, you know, when the safety guy comes around, you know, it can be difficult, but I think he breaks a lot of barriers with that clipboard, engages them, and I think it also serves to illustrate that we're an equal opportunity employer, so.
So he's asking for a twenty-five percent raise then, or?
Well, he's always asking for twenty-five percent raises. So the first budget that is related to Paul and his work is insurance on page eighty-nine. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm a page ahead, ninety-one. So Paul, Michelle, you want to talk a little bit about, you know, what's in this budget and how it's going with some of the particular funds?
Paul, you're. Sure. Yeah, Ken. Well, I think the biggest goal here is to try to, of course, keep our costs as low as we can. The challenge is going to be property insurance. Every time we get floods and hurricanes and fires and everything else, the costs just keep going up. So we're, I just got a letter yesterday, our current provider, we have a five-thousand-dollar deductible, which is very, very low. Their minimum is going to be twenty-five thousand dollars, but they're going to grandfather us to ten thousand. So that's our first challenge there is to take a look at that. However, LWMI and a couple of other entities went and informed a, an insurance, property insurance called MPIC. I have them giving us a bid, so I won't know anything more because as with insurance, you have to wait till like November anyways. So that's going to be the first thing I'm going to be taking a look at. Also, I got a, another letter. We have crime, is it crime, not crime insurance? It is, yeah, crime insurance. We have a separate policy on that currently. Where liability carrier is actually going to offer it. I don't, I haven't seen the specifics on it, so I'm hoping that it's going to be less in premium dollars than what we're currently paying because every year we have to go out to market to get a bid on that. So hopefully, some, some good news will be coming up. And then in terms of, Mr. Fitzpatrick had mentioned how they segregate funds, and I believe there is a line item in this one here. It's a sixty-four fifty-one. It's workers' compensation. That's money because we are partially self-funded for workers' comp as well. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar stop loss. Many years ago, Mr. Olaf and I had a discussion that we were trying to set money aside in that fund to build it up to pay for premiums and lost wages, and our goal was at four-hundred thousand, and then kind of take baby steps up. So happy to report that we're at five-seventy-two-nine, so we're eating in there. So hopefully, we won't have years like we did back in whatever those two dark years were that we had for workers' comp. Can't think of it off the top of my head, so. It was, it was nineteen. Not a good year for claims, so.
Yeah, and I.
Nineteen, twenty, nineteen.
Worker comp, it's a difficult, it's not linear. So I think Paul does a great job with training, with prevention. In, in terms of safety, works with employees on that, and, you know, that's really been beneficial for us to try to mitigate some of the, the huge costs.
And one of the other things, when you're talking about the clinic, and Michelle and I have talked about this, if we get to an expanded clinic and we could send workers' comp injuries there or guy, we can't direct them, we can suggest that they go there, that would be huge because anytime you go in for your workers' comp injury, I can guarantee you, there's going to be physical therapy. It just takes forever. This could cut our costs down quite a bit as well.
Yeah, and pre-employment, things that we'd also like to add to the clinic that was part of the original design. So that's probably a good segue. If you don't have any general insurance questions to the worker comp budget, and that's listed on page four-twenty-five.
Council helping the fund a few years ago made a big difference.
Yeah, right, exactly.
That, because Paul and I could talk about our goals, but the goal was really more just to, out of desperation, we needed to get some fund balance in there. And when we had a couple of bad years in a row, it was, we were, we were facing a deficit in that fund. So now we've turned that corner and over five-hundred thousand, which is, that's where we need to be. And I think even now, you're probably more advocating close to three-quarters of a million if you, if we really had our druthers. We got to have a cash flow for a bad claim. And since our deductibles, what, Paul?
Two-fifty.
You know, we could have, once somebody hits two-fifty, which seldom occurs, you know, then insurance, our stop loss kicks in. But everything up to two-fifty, we pay for. So a back issue or something like that, we're paying for everything. A knee reconstruction can cost a hundred grand easily. Somebody wrecks their knee, that's a hundred grand. That's all on us. So having that fund balance is really important, so.
Yeah, I think Mark did a good job. You know, we kind of glossed over the idea of being self-funded. So with our health insurance and worker comp, we're both self-funded, which means that we pay the bills when we, when we need to for both those two functional areas. But then we also have insurance that we take out that's kind of catastrophic. So just because the city pays those bills, we want to protect the city against catastrophic claims. So then we purchase what's called stop loss, and then when we have those catastrophes. And then when we have those catastrophic claims, when it gets to a certain threshold, that kicks in and reimburses the city and then protects us in both our health insurance and our, our worker comp. So that's what Mark is talking about. So anything else, Paul, about worker comp you want to share?
Yeah, I'll share my, my graph. Our workers' comp costs are down this year, which is awesome, it's trending in the right direction. Now, this is only through end of September, but we still pay for previous years. So so far, $532,000 of, in claims and lost wages and everything else that has been paid. And again, hoping that the clinic could knock down some of those expenses. But the only other thing in this particular budget, it's pretty, I mean, it's static, it's pretty, you know, if anybody has any questions in particular, I can certainly answer them, but it's, it's insurance.
Well, it's about going on. And I think Paul's not giving himself enough credit going out to market. He kind of brushed over, you know, MPIC was created, that's Municipal Property Insurance Corporation. And I'll give myself a little credit, between Paul and Matt Becker at LWMMI, the League Insurance, I'm on the board of League Insurance because we are the largest policyholder at League Insurance. MPIC was created when the state got out of the property insurance business. They, they had a insurance program that most cities were in, they literally just gave us, what, six months' notice and we were out. So MPIC was created with three companies, one of which was LWMMI, and we currently don't take insurance from them. Paul is, you know, not just jumping to MPIC just because it's part of, you know, associated with LWMMI. He has gone through, looked at it, and he willing to give them a straight shot, but it's still got to be the best offer for us. And so the fact that he's looking at MPIC just says we're willing to keep our options opened on these types of things.
They've been around, what, eight, eight years now?
Yeah, yeah, just about eight.
We didn't want to get in right away. So when I was at the policyholders meeting, I saw Matt this year and I saw Blair, and I said, hey, give me some names of some cities that you guys insure. And he threw out Madison and Appleton. I said, okay, we're ready now, we'll take a look, so...
So our insurance, it, it can go, you're going through, you can go through challenging times, I mean, the ups and downs of the insurance world. But I think Paul's just taken a very measured approach, and that's the nature of insurance, be very measured, careful, conservative. And then when we think the risk is appropriate for us to take, we can jump in. So Paul keeps, keeps an open mind to all that stuff.
I would add, yeah, I think Paul is very modest. And it might be a good segue to our next group, one of the things that he suggested a few years ago that the council saw fit to fund, and it, it was a, a challenge, and I think the council swallowed hard, but our cyber liability, when we put that in place, you know, that was, we had some challenging dialogue about that, but the council was like, hey, I know that this is something new, but we're going to trust that this is something that we need to do. And, you know, thankfully they did it because you're right around the cove, and when COVID started, we had a cyber liability attack, a ransomware attack. And if, had we not had that insurance in place, it really would have been devastating for us, not only from a cost perspective, but also from a diagnosis perspective and then getting us back up and running. And that, maybe that's a good segue to our next presenter, who is Tony Newman, who's in charge of IT.
How about if we...
Yeah, now's, I think, appropriate time, maybe take a little break?
Okay, sure.
As everybody knows, because it looks like they're running ahead, we asked Ms. Phillips from the museum to be here at 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
So you're, you will be able to fill your afternoon more with discussion and questions that I, I know you're looking forward to. So Sarah will be here at 11, so 12 o'clock.
All right. Sounds good, thank you. We'll, we'll start back up with IT after the break.
Are you having the library come on?
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
So I think we, I think we're half there on the funding part. And as you saw, we've got nearly 1.5 million dollars in there, so.
I think it's an excellent point that City Manager Roloff brought up. And then additionally, just to build on that, you know, we talked about that new intersection, hopefully getting that one fixed over there on Oshkosh Ave. But I mentioned earlier about the idea of our divisions working together, departments working together. And I know Ray is very pleased that through some of the work that Tony has put in at the new Lake Shore Pavilion, from a facilities perspective, you know, we're able to remotely control a lot of the HVAC and a whole variety of issues there at Lake Shore Pavilion, whether we need to or not, depending upon what sort of weather circumstance might exist. And that was really done through cooperation between IT and facilities. Do you have anything you want to say quickly about that?
Nope.
All right, good. And that's a good segue to our next group, which is General Services, John Urban and his folks. So, thanks, Tony.
Absolutely.
So, John Urban, it was really his idea, the Bloody Marys, I have to give him credit for that.
Isn't he a Viking saint?
Well, yeah. So, John's responsible for General Services, and his first budget is on 85. You know, the name General Services is just what it is. It's a, it's a kind of a hodgepodge of things that John is responsible for, and, you know, he works not only with our divisions in administrative services frequently, but all the other departments in the city. So, purchasing, you want to just kick it off with that, John?
Sure, thank you. The goal of purchasing is to work with our city departments and to procure for them the specific goods and services they need at the most competitive, you know, cost possible, the lowest price. And I can't say enough about our purchasing staff, our senior agent, our purchasing agent, Holly and Christine in our office. They do a great job working with departments. And I, and I think some of our accomplishments kind of highlight for 23, the kinds of projects that we work on, and some of the more significant projects we did in the last year. One thing that I think has really come to light in the last several years is the benefit of having purchasing and facilities in the same division has really proved to be a really efficient way of going about and doing things. Because of course, when we're wearing the hat of facilities and we need to do things, having the other hat of purchasing and knowing what we need to do to put things out to bid and all those sorts of things and bid specs, it's really made a lot of these projects just more efficient from our perspective of getting things done. So that's one thing that I think has really been a benefit over the last several years, and how we've been able to merge those two more strongly together. Not a lot to really mention of note in terms of the budget with purchasing. It's kind of a status quo. We've been working more closely this year, and we'll talk, I think, a little bit more about the facilities reorganization plan and what we've undertaken this last year. Purchasing was involved with that to a great degree, so, but nothing really significant in terms of the budget.
Any questions about purchasing? Otherwise, there's a variety of budgets that John is responsible for managing. So the next item would be in your book. You know, let's, let's leave facilities for last. So let's go to Oshkosh Media, and that is on page 97.
Another great team in Oshkosh Media, we've got Jake, Tim, and Andy Rattick, and Scott Williams. Oshkosh Media provides a variety of services for internal and external needs of the city. Some of the highlights they've got noted there, they're continue to be a well-respected and acknowledged by our peers for awards every year. Some of those are listed in the 23 accomplishments there. They've really done a great job of working with departments internally, and that's something that, that both City Manager Roloff and Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick have been proactive in getting departments to utilize Oshkosh Media in terms of their strengths with public relations and marketing and all those sorts of things. And so, you've, we've really seen that area and that scope roll within the last several years from a municipal side for Oshkosh Media. And so they, they work internally with a lot of departments on whatever campaigns they've got going on. More likely than not, Andy and the folks down there are working in those areas on those programs. So they've been doing a lot municipally. Community-wise, they're still very strong in the community, helping nonprofits get their message out, and of course highlighting community events and things happening here in the community. So, a lot of exciting things going on there every year. They've got a great board behind the scenes, the Friends of Oshkosh Community Media nonprofit board that helps them with, with a variety of fundraising efforts and so forth. The drone has been an item that has been really well-received by the community, and we also use it heavily for municipal activities and updates. There's something about seeing a drone footage that sort of captures your eye in a much different way than just a camera on the ground. So, they've really utilized that, and the Friends have been instrumental with funding that, with that project. So, that's been an exciting thing last couple of years. So, yeah, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, and just to add, I think, you know, John is being very modest about the accolades that Oshkosh Media has been able to garner over the years. I know Councilmember Esslinger was involved early on with, with Oshkosh Media, and I think it might be, the community might be surprised to know that, you know, Oshkosh Media is kind of regarded as one of the best facilities in the state, if not the best facility in the state, and, and in the Midwest and, you know, across the nation. We frequently have other cities come and tour our area, our control room, and talk to, and they can't believe that everything that we do is done with really three people. So, it's pretty amazing, and, you know, we're very fortunate to have the people that we have working in that area. They do it with very little fanfare. And also, you know, the idea of opening up government, opening up the activities of what we're all involved in to the community, I think it's so important for the public to, to have that opportunity. And in addition to working, as John said, seamlessly with all the other departments and divisions, so, a lot of great work.
If I could just stop you there, John. Yeah, John, John Urban was there many, many years ago when I was on the Friends of Ocat, and John is, he is being way too modest. He was largely responsible for where that, where this is now, and I'm under these awards meetings and stuff, and we do have a facility here. I think the city, the citizens of Oshkosh really, really treasure what we have here, and John is largely responsible for that. And Scott and Andy, I was really happy to see Andy come back again. I don't know what we had to bribe him with in order to get him back. So, John, you did a great job there. I know you, you know, are in a different capacity now somewhat, but, so, that's just, you know, one of the, the divisions here in the city that I think more people have seen and probably maybe not understand what they've dealt with than any other, you know, and it's just, it's, it's completely top-notch.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
The drone, you touched on it briefly, but the social media outreach, the videos that you guys have been putting together, the usage of that, it's really been top-notch. Especially the, the Public Works projects, to be able to get a flyover of, you know what, here, here's where we're at today, because, you know, unless you, you know, drive around the barricades to see where people are at, you know, a good visual of it.
We are not recommending that.
We are not recommending that.
You're not admitting or denying it?
Thank you for helping me with that. No, I think it's, it's a great tool, you know, useful in lots of avenues, but I've been liking it with the Public Works projects and what you guys have been doing with that.
Good, good, yep. It's, and you touched upon the social media. We have been very proactive in that as well, in expanding that whenever we can. And I don't know if we talked about this, but these Oshkosh Media folks have worked with the other social media folks on staff throughout the city, and they have a working group. And so they meet on a regular basis, and they talk about all these sorts of social media strategies and, you know, activities and so forth that we can work together on. And they brainstorm on various things, and Andy and Jake have been a huge part of that. And so it's, it's been a very productive process having all those folks involved together. Because then we're kind of working together as an organization too, because you have, let's face it, all these departments are doing different things, but at least from, when we have them all together from social media, they can kind of see what they're doing and work together on some of their common goals with promoting that and being in sync, so to speak. So that's been helpful, too.
Any other questions for Oshkosh Media, about Oshkosh Media? Okay. John, would you like to just start with facilities and then go to some of these other budgets?
Sure, let's do that.
Want to do it that way?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, Terry, you want to come on up? Want to get Mike up here right away, too, or not?
I'll wait for Mike for the end of Capitol.
All right. Okay, so Terry Smith, he's just joining us right now. So he's a facilities maintenance supervisor. He's the one, he likes to tell everybody, he's the person that makes everybody's dreams come true. So.
The business part.
Right, right. So, facilities maintenance, that's on page 93, if you aren't already there. And, you know, just before I turn it over to John, I want to thank the council again. You know, I know for those folks that were here last cycle, they allowed us to consolidate facilities across the entire organization. We had kind of a evolution point where, you know, when we first started out as a smaller community, everybody was just taking care of their own buildings. And I think that was probably the right model. But I think we got to a point, and we've discussed this with City Manager Roloff quite extensively, and also Finance Director Van Gompo, that, hey, you know, we think we could be more efficient by, you know, bringing the resources together. We could do a better job planning, not duplicating costs and things like that. And, and, you know, John, to his credit, and his folks talked to the other departments, and they agreed, because they certainly are very busy with all their other specific disciplines, and don't have a lot of time to really devote to additional issues like facilities. So, you know, it was very humbling to have them support this idea the last time we got together for the budget, and, you know, ask the council to support our department and consolidate staff into this area, and, you know, elevate Terry to supervisor, and then also, you know, add Mike as a coordinator, and we'll be talking to him in a little bit. But I think John did a really nice job gaining and earning the trust of those departments. And we certainly appreciate the trust of the council to make all this happen. And I think we, as you know, we have quite a few projects on the docket going forward. And I don't want to steal any of Mike's thunder or John's thunder associated with that, but it really has been, I think, successful so far, and we got some work to be done yet. But I'll let, I'll turn it over to, to John with that said.
And I think, I think Assistant City Manager John Fitzpatrick is being a little humble in this, too, and I also want to thank him and City Manager Roloff and Finance Director Russ Van Gompo, as well as council last year, for what John talked about with this FM reorganization, basically is what we undertook. And it really has been a, a, a strong process, and I think we've really started to realize some of the benefits of merging this, these positions over. And just to recap quickly, as part of that reorg, what happened was, we merged a few areas of their facility staff to centralize them into facilities maintenance, and to, as John said, to just better streamline the process, work more consistently with these areas, start to realize some of the benefits of having a consistent approach on maintenance, working with vendors, staffing, all those sorts of things. So, part of that recap, real quickly, is we brought the plumber over from Parks, we brought the facility maintenance technician from Museum, the part-time maintenance worker from the museum, and then we added a full-time maintenance technician to bring on for the additional responsibilities of the buildings that we are going to be taking on. And just to recap that quickly, so in addition to all of the buildings we currently manage, which include, of course, City Hall, the safety building, the senior center, the convention center, the Grand Opera House, starting this coming year, January 1, we will officially be taking over the field operations center, the Parks Administration Building, the Parks Force Season, and then the fire stations. So, it, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, a pretty large responsibility, taking on these new responsibilities with maintenance. But I have to give credit to Terry, and that's why he's up here this year. Terry and Mike worked together to meet with these departments, to understand what their maintenance needs are, so that we can plan for those appropriately, beginning the beginning of the year. And then also look at things and how we can start to take advantage of that. We're not there yet. We haven't term, been able to, like, come to you and say, hey, we've saved X dollars from this move, because it's, it's going to be a transition. It's going to take a couple of years for us to get these systems up and running. But I have to say that both Terry and Mike did a great job. They met with the museum, the parks, Public Works, Fire Department, and really kind of transitioned now, what do we need to be aware of, what kinds of things do we need to be taken care of moving forward and so forth. And so, I think it's been a really good process, and I don't know, Terry, if you have anything to add to that in terms of all those meetings, when they're going through that process?
No, we just got together and, and talked to them, and of course, it's something I've done for a number of years, so we just had to find out what their needs were, and we'll take it from there.
So, budgetarily, how that translates, there are some changes to our facilities budget that reflect taking on those additional responsibilities in preventive maintenance, in supplies, so forth. So, you'll see some of that in our budget as, as part of that transition, so.
Right, and just to finalize this, so we can get into the budgets. For people that weren't aware of what happened last year, one of the other things that council undertook was, and Finance Director, Finance Director Van Gompo and City Manager Roloff were really the force behind the thoughts behind this process, and that was to take a look at our facilities' needs going forward and working with the council and long-range finance to try to establish a component of our CIP that focused exclusively on building projects. And, you know, when we went through that process, I think at that time, and I know Russ will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we identified, like, $67 million worth of projects that needed to really be addressed. And then, when we did that, we went to council and said, hey, you know, given the thought that we have to manage these projects going forward, and giving the evolution of our organization, we really think it's time to, you know, invest in some staff as well as consolidating this, so we can do a good job managing these facilities for the benefit of the public going forward. And that was something that, you know, the previous council agreed with and was saw fit to support, and then that's how we got to where we are today. So, so thank you for that.
And just a point of clarification, on page 94, you'll see that maintenance worker part-time, and the timing is good, because Ms. Phillips and her folks have just walked in. That .64 position's coming from the museum, so when we talk about the museum, you're going to see that as a reduction. So that's where consolidating some of these areas. We've already done the plumber coming from Parks, so now that'll just be one more. What that means is, if there's an issue related to the museum where they need more than just that person, they can put all hands on deck to get over to the museum and, and help take care of something. Similarly, anywhere else, if it's at a fire station or something like that. And you're going to hear Chief, Chief Stanley, you know, talk about how much time his folks are occupied. Well, if they're, if they, if they got to take out the garbage and there's an ambulance run, we know where the priority's going to be. And so, you know, Terry's folks will be able to help them so that when they're out busy doing what they're primarily responsible to do. Historically, of fire stations, you know, the, it used to be the old joke, there'd be, you know, it's like, well, I, I know you put out fires, but I need an electrician and a plumber and a carpenter at the, at the firehouse. So, they'd literally look for somebody who had those skills. That ship has sailed, that's no longer the case. Our firefighters are so busy that they can't necessarily even take care of basic building maintenance because of the demands on their time. Terry fills that void, Terry and his folks fill that void, which is, is very helpful.
Okay, with that said, John, you want to delve into the budgets?
Yeah, the main items I'd like to just point out is, as part of that audit where Terry and Mike sat down with those departments and taking on those additional responsibilities for 2024, it's, it's really focused on five main account numbers. 6416, preventive maintenance costs, 6417, the third-party contractual, 6418, the cleaning services and uniform laundries, 6529, the non-inventory supplies, and then 6550 capital supplies. So, net difference, when we did our, our analysis, it's about $125,000 we're taking from these other departments when we absorb those costs in 2024. So, my understanding, those department budgets are, have been reduced accordingly, so it should be a net, a net zero change on that. But, and, and just jumping back quick to the facility maintenance tax that Terry has under him, I mean, I can't thank them enough for their transition this year, because it, it has been a little bit of a challenge between waiting for new people to, to be transferred over and to also hire new people and so forth. I mean, we've really had to juggle a lot. They've had to work different shifts, different times, really making the most out of not a lot of people initially. So, yeah, I did want to thank them as well.
Any other questions about the facility budget on 95? Otherwise, we'll move to some of the more specific budgets related to facilities. The next one would be the Grand Opera House on page 259. And I know the council has been approached by Joe Furlough and talking, you know, about some of the needs. I just want to let everybody know that we've worked, I think, very successfully with Joe and the Grand Opera House for some time, through many, many very difficult circumstances, including, you know, the, the addition that was done with the Grand Lounge. And I think, I think we have a good partnership. For people that don't know, we, the city owns the building, and Joe and the Grand Opera House Foundation Board work on the programming of that facility. So, do you want to talk a little bit about what's going on at, at the Grand Opera House, John?
I think it's easy to say that that relationship is much like a landlord-tenant relationship. The city owns the building, the, the grand foundation is, is the tenant. As John said, we have our obligation to help them out with various maintenance. It's all drawn up in the, in the lease agreement. And we have been working very successfully with, with Joe and now Dave Lang, who's back in, in the play, with, with their needs and what they've got going on there. It is an old building, there's always something. We try to stay in touch with these, with these meetings. We try to meet with them regularly to get a better handle on what's, what's going on. We've got several items on, on the list that we've been working towards, but as you may have heard, with their potential annex renovations, some of those are kind of now on hold as we wait and see how that plays out. So, we are putting in, the, the big project for this year is we're putting in a, a new wheelchair lift in the, in the front lobby there. That's something we've been working on for a while, and I'm hoping, Terry, by this fall, we should, we should probably have it in before the end of the year. So that, that's going to be a big, a big improvement there. And we've been working on various other things with, throughout the building that is part of the lease agreement, so.
Is there anything, Mark, that you'd like to add in regard to some of the dialogue we've had with Joe and their board members?
Sure. I think we reported back to the board, Joe made a presentation to the council, I think, back in August or something like that, when they were making their pitch for that renovation project. And, you know, the challenge has been thrown down to the board, and I think they're accepting it, is that they're looking at a renovation that, depending on what the scope is, could be anywhere from four to six million dollars. And so the idea was that if they could raise the funds for half of it, that we would find the funds for the other half. The main thing that's changed is, I had represented the council that I thought maybe this might be an opportunity to use ARPA funds, and as Russ and his staff looked at it, they cautioned me against that strategy, not because that wasn't an appropriate use of ARPA funds, but strategically, because the funds need to be committed, and in, in, in finances interpretation, if we don't have a contract let by the end of 2024, then it technically isn't committed and wouldn't be eligible for ARPA funds. So, Russ and his staff have, have juggled things around, and that's where you saw some of the, like, the fern out, getting funded with ARPA money as well, and that, I forgot about that part of it until we started talking about the grand. The challenge to the grand is that they need to have a feasibility study on fundraising completed by the end of the year. And if they do that, then the first half million in design work would be funded by ARPA, because that would be spent in '24. That'll get done. So you, when you take a look at the sources of the, the grand's project, the first half million of our funds would be into the design work that would get done with ARPA during 2024. That would then trigger them to do a more full-blown fundraising, and they need to have their three million, two to three million, depending on the scope of the work, they need to have it raised by the end of 2024. And at this time next year, we'll have a pretty good idea of how they're progressing on that fundraising. If they're successful, then I would recommend to the council that we do the borrowing necessary to fund the city's remaining two and a half million, up to two and a half million, matching funds. But they have to demonstrate they have the money in hand, because we're not going out to bid unless we know we have their money, and then our money will follow through. And so that's my, that's my recommendation as contained in the, in the CIP. So the only thing you'd be approving, when you approve the budget in November, would be the half million dollars, but it's subject to them getting that feasibility, saying, we believe we can, our consultant has said, we can raise the, the necessary funds. And I, I know Councilmember Stevenson's liaison, I'm not sure, has that pretty much been shared with the, the board as a whole?
Yeah, yeah, and I will say that feasibility study is underway right now. I know they wanted to try to get it done in November, but that's just not going to be physically possible, but it will be done by the end of the year. So, yeah, I think all the information you've reiterated right now is, is, they're up to date on that.
I think, Mark, I think Mark did a good job kind of capturing the dialogue, but I, John and I were in those meetings with the foundation board representatives, too, and just to characterize it a little bit more, I think, you know, their idea initially was to tap into some of the ARPA funds, but I think the more we had shared dialogue about how that, the concerns associated with how those needed to be spent, I think they understood that we were really looking out for their well-being in the future, and not to provide undue pressure for them to go through this research that they needed to do and fundraising. And I, you know, I can't speak for them, but, I mean, I had a sense that they appreciated the fact that we were thinking about how we could consider their circumstances, but also make this all happen. So, anything else on that, Mark, you want to share?
No, I think that kind of covered it. I just wanted to give you a little semi-update from what we discussed back in August, but that's why this is now under borrowing. But when you look at it, if they can raise $3 million, I mean, that's a 50% grant. It's the equivalent of a 50% grant. And generally, when we've gotten those, I can cite many things in the past where we've had that kind of fundraising.
Right.
Effort done, and we've purchased something. I go back to the library in 1994. We had fundraising, we did, we did the library because of that. The C-COV, which we were talking about.
Yes.
With the police department.
And, and I know you were talking about some of those circumstances yesterday, when you were talking to Ray about the roundabouts, and, you know, I know Joe and his folks understand this very clearly, and when we had a, you know, a working relationship with the Convention Center folks before the staff changed, they, they understood very well that, you know, when we're talking about capital projects, they're competing with all kinds of different things that the council needs to make decisions on, like road projects and all kinds of different things. So, if they can bring some money to the table, it kind of gives them a little bit of extra cachet for the council to consider when they're competing against these other projects that are, you know, primarily driven by citizen awareness. So, I think Joe certainly understands that, and I think that that's something that, you know, might provide the opportunity for council to, you know, more easily support this when you're looking at all the competing interests. So.
So Joe's representing that, and I think it's assisting in the fundraising.
Yeah, I think it is, too. Any question, any more questions about this project? Or the Grand Opera House in general? Okay, all right. So another specific budget that we have is with the Oshkosh Convention Center, that's on page 263. That's a little bit more of a complex budget that I know we work very closely with finance on, because it involves, it has involved in the past some debt, it has involved a variety of different funding options, the room tax and stuff like that. But I think we're doing pretty well with this. John, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Talk about the operational side. Much like the Grand Opera House, there is a operators' maintenance agreement that we work to address the city's responsibilities. maintenance agreement that we work to address the city's responsibilities as part of this project. And we've been doing that for, geez, I don't even know how many years it's been now, but at least 10 years now. But we work with the hotel operators, which in this case is Dave Helgeson, the general manager at the hotel now. And we work to keep the Convention Center operating smoothly, in short. So, whenever there's issues with any maintenance, HVAC, electrical, water, et cetera, Terry will be called down there, and then we'll assess what needs to be done. We had some significant projects in 2023 that we're just wrapping up now. The air handler units, which are in the mezzanine of the ballroom, that's something we've been working on for a long time now. It was supposed to be done earlier this year, but because of some installation delays by the contractor, we had to put it off till this coming December. So, you may or may not know, the Convention Center is going to go dark for the month of December so that we can address the air handler project as well as the elevators being replaced. So, that project was on the capital improvement list for a while. So, that's also going to be done. We completed updating the exterior messaging sign that's out there on the corner of CP and Main. It was done earlier this year. So, a lot of activities going on at the Convention Center. We work closely with Dave and the staff. There's always something, always something going on there that we help them with, whether it's doors or issues with the kitchen or kitchen equipment and so forth. But they're a very good partner. They've been very, very responsive on what they need to do as well, and we look forward to continuing that relationship down the road. So, yeah, it's going pretty good.
Any questions about the Convention Center? Okay, the next item then is the parking ramp, and that's on page 267. So, with this, you know, we contract with a consultant to take a look at the ramp and provide a timeline in terms of what sort of maintenance needs to be done to the ramp. And I think that methodology's been successful for us for quite some time. I know we've been dealing with some, you know, additional inquiries with the new operators, but I think the dialogue's been good because Dave has, is a holdover from the previous staff. Is there anything you want to add about this budget, John?
Well, this budget credit goes back to City Manager Roloff. When they designed the operator lease agreement for maintaining the ramp, I believe Mark came up with the idea of having so many dollars per night of stay paid by someone staying at the hotel go into this fund. So, I believe it's up to $3 a night now. If you stay at the hotel, that money goes into this fund to help offset the annual maintenance issues that we deal with. So, it's been a really good project in that regard. And as John said, we do contract with WGI that does and just recently did this past year, a 10-year study to identify what we need to do to keep the ramp maintained well. And they were very, when they did their recent study, they gave us a lot of kudos. They said, "You really take care of this ramp. It's in much better shape than most ramps of its age." And so, every year, or maybe every other year, depending on what they've got called out, we take care of it. This year, we did some ramp repairs. We repaired the asphalt on the first level and various column repairs on the various levels and so forth. So, some years, it's a lot of work to be done. This year, it wasn't a lot necessarily in terms of other years. But, yeah, so we were responsible for keeping the ramp safe and operating nicely for the hotel. And so far, that's going very well, too.
Any questions about the ramp?
Why do we own a ramp? I mean, I understand the history, and there was a bunch of stuff that went on. Can't we get rid of this in some hour?
Technically, we don't own the ramp. We can maintain it as a public lot. The hotel technically owns the structure, and City Center Associates owns the land underneath it. Because of an obscure provision in a, it was called a UDAG grant from the 1970s, we have to have some ownership maintenance responsibilities for it. So, it gets funded with that $3 fee that gets assessed. So, no tax dollars, no room tax dollars. There's no public taxed funds that are used. It's only the $3 that you go into there, you register, you pay the bill, $3 per night, whether you have a car there or not. So, that's paid for by the hotel guests, and it's used into that building. We probably got about $300, $350,000 in reserves as a result of that. So, we're not completely out of it, but we're not financially responsible, except to administer the funds that are there, that are not, that are collected by the hotel for the hotel.
What about liability?
That liability, there's insurance that's built into the expenses for that. We got a line on it specifically for that, $5,500 a year. It comes right out of that fee. So, we're off the hook on all of that. Do we have liability beyond insurance? Yes, we do. But technically, you can park there if you're not a guest of the hotel. It is a public lot, just like.
Right. That's a benefit to the city that the public can also park there. It's not exclusive to the hotel.
You're talking about upstairs, right?
The ramp itself, the whole ramp.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, you may have, oh, sorry. Oh, the parking ramp. Oh, yeah. Yeah, about $300,000 we project by the end of '24. So, yeah, we're still in that range. And that's assuming we spend $300,000 next year. We always have a higher amount just in case something bad happens that we can say it's budgeted. And so, if there's an improvement that moves up, we just don't spend the money because we have the money. John and the hotel work very closely together to make sure that if there's a need, we take care of it. So, we're out of the business, which wasn't the case 12 years ago, the last time you were on council. But your fear is what we were addressing, and now we're just responsible for maintaining and be a trustee of those funds.
So, this continues infinitum with them?
We have a lease agreement with them, with the new owners through 2070, actually. Isn't it 2070, John? Yeah, I'm probably asking.
2070? I don't think it's that far out. I don't have it in front of me, but I.
No, that's right, because it's not longer. It's the 50 years, the clock ran on the 50 years. Yeah, it's probably only about 20, 25 years left in this agreement. So, eventually, it will revert to private ownership of the hotel, and then they have to deal with the City Center owners about the land. And then we'll technically be out of the requirement from the UDAG grant from the 70s. Oh, I think it's 2050, that's it. The grant was a 75-year requirement for us to be in the game. That was from 1975. So, now it's about 2050-ish, and give or take a year or two there. Then our responsibility's over. City Attorney has much better recollection of this than I do. I'm not saying she was there in 1975, but she's familiar with the requirements. But it was just a grant that we used to get that built, redone back in the 70s. So, by 2050, we'll be out of the business.
Any other questions about the ramp?
Not about the ramp, but just for your reference, on page 56 in your budget document, when we set out the budget, initially, we didn't have a recap of the fund balance for all of various funds. We had one for the general fund, but we didn't have the other funds. So, on page 56 is a summary of the fund balance at the end of 2022, what the projection is for '23, then what the fund balance would be at the end of '23, and then any surplus or deficit in the budget, and then the budget projection for the end of '24. So, for this example, Convention Center parking ramp's about 60% of the way down, and you'll see that at the end of '23 will be about $520,000. And again, we have kind of projected worst-case scenario for expenditures. So, we're projecting a use of about $200,000. So, that still leaves $300,000 in fund balance. So, if that comes up on any other funds, as we were looking at it, I should have included that in my introductory remarks, but I didn't.
No, it's a good, it's a good reference point.
So, we feel good about this one, I mean, the $300,000, so that deficit in 2023, that's a one-time deal?
And that's assuming we even spend it. We just have a place marker in case something comes up, so it's budgeted. We can just come in, if something bad happens that we need to do a quick expenditure, we can bid it out. Again, that was what John was talking about with facilities and purchasing. We can come and say, "It's already budgeted."
Right.
But do we have an idea what that $300,000 is? Maybe about $100 grand of it, maybe.
Well, we're pretty good. We've done the repairs for this year, the, you know, the maintenance of the ramp. So, it's just a placeholder. We don't have anything else planned.
Yeah, I think I'd consider this one of the more successful. It's a small fund, but I think we solved a lot of the concerns that have been out there for years.
I think so, too.
I think the key is staying on top of it every year, doing what they recommend so that we don't fall behind, and, you know, obviously, things get worse then, so.
Right. Well, all right. The last item that we have, I know you've had discussions about CIP projects. So, if you want to just turn to 449, we have Mike Blank here now, and, you know, we talked about him and all the accolades associated with him before he got up here. We're very fortunate that he's moved from the dark side of Public Works to the light of Administrative Services. He's doing a great job coordinating all kinds of different projects for our organization. And on page 449, it's a listing of all the facility-related CIP projects. And I'll just turn it over to John, and he can just quickly go through that.
Yeah, Mike was brought on as part of that facilities reorganization we talked about earlier. So, his title is Facilities Project Coordinator. And he really works closely with departments, then, on any facility projects that we can assist with. So, this year, he's been heavily involved with, for example, Parks Department. Ray's been, you know, trying to get the Four Seasons and the Parks Administration Building completed. So, of course, Mike's been involved with that and helping out with things. And I know Ray's been very helpful, I mean, very appreciative of Mike's help with all that. And then there's other projects with the museum and so forth. But one thing that Mike has worked towards and has really been, just kind of keeping us sane a little bit, is he's put together a project tracker list. And we've done this for years in purchasing, but I think it really helps out for the work that Mike is doing. So, on our project tracker list, we list every project that he's working on, and it captures all the information associated with it, and then, of course, the status of where things are at. So, in one spreadsheet, we can kind of try to capture where he is with everything on these projects. And this is something we meet as a staff on regularly, as I said earlier, purchasing and facilities work closely on these. And there is a lot of intermixing with Terry and his work operationally with a lot of these projects, too. So, this has been a spreadsheet that's been very valuable and something that Mike's worked on.
Right. And just to go beyond the spreadsheet, I know that John is working with IT, and you might be familiar with kind of a project tracker that we have online for the public to look at in regard to street projects. That's interactive. I know John is also working with Tony and IT to have that same sort of interface available on our Intranet for our employees to understand what's going on with the different projects internally, too. That'll incorporate a lot of this information that John's talking about on the static spreadsheet.
So, just a quick recap, and I'll turn it over to Mike if you want to go any more detail. But there's projects that are everything from the 19 Irving to the ramp repairs we talked about at the ramp, the Convention Center safety building, museum, Parks Building, library. We've been helping the library on several items, the fire department, and then other projects coming up down the road, whether it's the generators, the Grand, a lot of things for the Grand. Go Transit, we're getting ready to help them with their Phase Two project, even things like the departmental radio telemetry study that we're doing with Public Works. So, yeah, there's just a list of items here on things. If you have any, if you're trouble sleeping at night, we'd be happy to give you this because there's a lot of detail on here. But if there's any particular details you'd like to get more information on our projects, Mike certainly is happy to provide that now or later.
Mike, you have anything you want to share?
I guess in my short time with facilities, I find myself leaning on John and Terry's experience with the city and their knowledge of all the facilities. One thing eye-opening to me is getting in in some of these buildings and seeing the age of the elevators, the generators, the fire alarms. It really makes me aware of, there's a lot of upgrades to do. There's a lot of upkeep. So, and like John said, we got everything from the museum to OCC, to the ramp, fireplace, so a lot of aging facilities.
And just to kind of bring it all back, you know, talking about the consolidation, it may seem like small items, but it really adds up over time. You know, something as small as just having one contract for all our fire emergency systems that we have in all the buildings, rather than having a contract in this department, and a contract in that department, and a contract in that department, where we're duplicating costs, you know? And then having, taking a look at these things comprehensively so we can budget appropriately and put things in the CIP so we're not duplicating costs again. So, as John said, it's a little early to talk about realizing any savings. But, you know, from an efficiency perspective, I think you can just imagine that, you know, we're doing a better job not only for the facilities that our employees occupy, but also for the costs that would be passed on to the citizenry. That's really the whole principle behind this.
And I do think that we are helping departments. I don't think, and I'm not trying to sound like we're bragging or anything, but I really think it's helpful for departments when we bring in a team of our resources and say, "All right, so what do you need to do?" And we can kind of sit down with them and try to identify what those needs are. We have a little bit of experience with other projects we've done recently. We know how to bid it out. We know what the players are. I think that's all helpful. That's all beneficial. And it's at the end of the day, that's what's going to make the city more efficient and ultimately save dollars. So, I do think there's a lot of benefit to this process. It is cumbersome at times, but I think it's very valuable to do. And I think we're already seeing a lot of those benefits of pulling it all together.
I would agree. Any questions on any of the projects that are listed, or anything else for Administrative Services?
One small one. Your first-line ADA improvement program, that came out of facility study that we did recently, what, two years ago-ish? I think the direction we had given, that was one of, I think, Mark's goals, you know, go after that first. That was low-hanging fruit, but I'm only seeing funding in '24. After that, there's no funding. So, do we feel that after '24, we've reached a good enough point, or kind of inquiry?
Thanks for bringing that up. We identified, when we went through that process, and we identified, there were three categories. There was in progress, there was future funding, and there was completed. That's the three designations of the items that that study identify. And the departments we're working with, everyone from Parks to Museum to Facilities, Library and so forth, we've made great progress this year. We're way ahead of most cities in terms of getting those items, the low-hanging fruit items done. So, really, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the most part, all that's remaining are the future funding projects. And future funding by that designation is items that would not be changed until a CIP project were to come along, and the building is being.
City Hall renovations in '25, '26.
Exactly. So, we've done all of the items that we feel we can address. We still have a few left in '24. That's why you see it in there. And I think those are primarily in Parks. They've got some larger projects that could, you know, we would designate those funds for. But, I mean, kudos to the departments. They've taken the initiative to get these items identified and worked on. So, at this point, we don't see anything after next year.
All right. Thank you. I think museum's next.
Hey, John.
Thank you.
I don't know.
So, what kind of treats did you bring?
I brought me. Does that count for anything? Right? And these two lovely folks.
The greatest treat of all, knowledge.
Yes, bestowing things.
Boy, oh, boy.
And I didn't bring candy like Diane did.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being so flexible. Behind the scenes, we've moved Sarah twice.
Happy to be flexible. Well, I was going to say good afternoon, but good morning and happy Halloween to everyone. I think the museum has done some really great things, quietly behind the scenes this year, but also making good strides to be more present in the public. As you know, the museum has a newly expanded mission to serve our community. Our updated mission is to preserve and promote history, art and culture for Oshkosh residents and visitors by stewarding. and visitors by stewarding collections, creating educational experiences, and providing access to the unique heritage of the Lake Winnebago region. Our vision is to create a community of culture within the city of Oshkosh. We have really spent a great deal of time this year recalibrating the museum's practices and refocusing on how we can best serve the community at large. Throughout 2023, the museum has worked to not just better serve our community, but also best serve our colleagues within the city. This year, we met with stakeholders and other folks within the city staff to evaluate the perception of the museum and to adjust our brand accordingly. So next year, be on the lookout for an updated new logo and new brand launch for the museum. We hired a curator of education who has not only continued the work with the Oshkosh Area School District, but has started developing relationships with staff at UW-Oshkosh and within the Mung community. He's also working to further develop relationships with the Spanish-speaking community at large, the indigenous populations, and the tribal schools as well. He's also been in touch with the State Historical Society about cultivating a strong National History Day program here in Oshkosh for local students. With some of the recalibration we've done, we've also been able to look internally at the assets that we have within our own facility. A great deal of research and time has been spent to better understanding the historic Sawyer Home. A direct result of this is the development of the Wisteria Circle. That's a giving circle for patrons, excuse me, interested in donating funds specifically to support the permanent collection and the preservation of the historic Sawyer Home and its Tiffany collections. This has resulted in gifts of over $30,000 this year alone, with pledges of over $165,000 over the next five years. And again, this program is because we now better understand the assets that the museum itself has within its staff, within the footprint, and the beautiful Tiffany that... I'm looking at Anna because she did a phenomenal job researching and partnering with other museums to understand these collections. We also recently launched a brand-new website. It is now a more modern and accessible web presence so we can communicate better to the public, our events, our costs, our hours, how people can come visit us. And also, it's mobile-friendly. Our previous website was not mobile-friendly. We've opened a permanent exhibit, this is Winnebago land, as well as several smaller temporary exhibits, to continue changing things out, to increase our reach while upstairs on the second floor is undergoing construction. We also just hosted this year's Dia de los Muertos event, over-doubling last year's attendance. So we've had a really wonderful opportunity and partnership with local businesses who sponsored the event, as well as different community groups who came to participate. So that is a very quick year in review. Before we jump into the budgets, are there any questions about those things?
We had to edit it down because all of her accomplishments were practically taking up the whole page over there.
We've been busy this year. So we'll start with the collections budget on page 214. The collections budget is one that is funded completely through donations and the sale of deaccessioned pieces from the collection, so items that were once part of the permanent collection but have been sold. According to national standards, any funds that are generated through the sale of previous collections have to be directly reinvested into the collection. So it's an ethical standard of the American Alliance of Museums who dictates that for us. The biggest change that you'll see in the budget is an increase to, an increase to the total budget because what we are working towards in the 6401 line item is to hire someone to come and evaluate the collections that are relevant and fall under the federal law of NAGPRA. So earlier this year, we had some press coverage locally about how national and regional institutions were handling things like sensitive remains, indigenous peoples, the collections associated with them, funerary objects, objects of cultural patrimony specific to indigenous cultures. And as we were going through our records, it became very clear that although we have very comprehensive records that date to the '90s, when NAGPRA was enacted, we have not had the bandwidth to go through since then to update those records with new information that may have been ascertained since then. We would like to really take a proactive stance, hire somebody to come in, update all of those records, do some outreach to the different tribal communities that the pieces in our collection may currently represent, and see what work we can do to begin the process, a more proactive process of repatriation. So Anna, do you have any additional?
Our goal is to also hire someone from the indigenous community that has a background in indigenous history and might be able to address any blind spots that we have among staff. So I think that's really important to have someone from that community be able to do some of the outreach where we might not have, well, not to downgrade our skill set, you know, there are blind spots that are present. So that's another part of the overall phased project that we, I think is critical to its success.
Also, as part of the changes to this budget, you'll see the 7222 Fine Arts. We've significantly increased that. That's a direct result, again, of those Wisteria Circle donations. We kind of wanted to earmark funds in case a significant piece came up at an auction house that we would have those funds approved and available to make a purchase to enhance our permanent collections if warranted. So that's just a fund that's kind of earmarked in case something comes up that would be an asset to the community. Any questions about this particular budget? This is the shortest one, so. All right, we'll move on to the membership budget on page 193. So the membership budget, again, is not a budget that is funded through tax levy funds. These are all of the entrepreneurial efforts of the museum. So things like our museum membership program go directly into this, as well as if there's undesignated donations that are made to the museum, that kind of thing. If we are working for grants to provide public programming, that enhances this budget as well. Again, just kind of going over things, there's not a lot of really significant changes to this budget. You will see that employee, excuse me, employee training has increased. So we moved employee training out from the operations budget. And I felt it was important to start investing in some employee training funds. So that's an increase there, as well as the non-inventory supplies. So that's 6529. There's an increase to that because with, hopefully, the construction wrapping up on the second floor, those non-inventory supply budget line items are also things like graphics used for exhibitions. So increasing the budget there so we can have some beautiful centennial exhibits at the museum.
Just slip the centennial thing in there.
Fly it in.
Next year is our 100th anniversary.
Yes, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of a fun year. So because the museum will be still under construction as the second floor is being renovated, we have a series of exhibits planned to go in the Sawyer Home to share not just the collections that we have, but the story of the Sawyer family and the impact that they made in the community. So making sure we're not just looking at the family, but all of the philanthropic efforts that they were part of that invested in Oshkosh, things like the library, the parks, the arts, all these different things that they did to enhance the city. So one of the things that the membership fund does is its fund balance contributes to paying for some of the positions that the museum has. So when we get to the operating budget, you'll see transfers into the operating budget to help fund some of those LTE positions, as well as the curator of education. So any questions about the membership budget? We're just flying, guys. We're flying through.
I'm prepared.
Everybody's hungry.
All the big ones are yet to come here.
Yes. So the museum operating budget on page 209. Just to highlight some of the accomplishments, again, I'm very proud of the work that we've done, hiring the curator of education. There have been just endless possibilities opened by hiring that position out. He's done a really, really wonderful job of engaging with different grade levels. So last year, our bread and butter was really that third-grade OASD audience. We're working now to do outreach to all of the different grade levels so we can find out how the museum can be a presence, not just through field trips, but doing outreach into the classrooms and making sure that we are an ongoing presence through the career of students within the community.
I have to chime in there and say that that's been awesome.
Thank you.
To re-engage OASD.
Yeah.
The way you have, so, well done.
Thank you, thank you.
They tested the materials on somebody who was a good test for third graders, that was me. I passed, I passed.
Did you stay in the lines?
With a little help, yeah.
You didn't shake things.
It really was. I mean, the stuff that they've done to reach out to be very inclusive of, relevant for third graders. I mean, that's a tough group, and when you connect with them, that will bring them back. And they'll run home to mom and dad and say, hey, this is a really cool place. Can we go back?
Yeah.
That's our in to get the whole thing rolling. And Sarah and Anna and the whole museum staff are really committed to that.
I'm a third grader last year, really enjoyed it.
Thank you. And I will say, just, I think the whole staff feels this way, but on a personal note, I mean, hearing all of the little voices and all of the excitement when field trips come through the museum, that, it just makes you feel good about what we're doing, hearing these, you know, younger kids really excited about things that they saw. It helps make these really, these stories come to life. It kind of makes things tangible. And so when you're learning something in a classroom, it has a different feeling and a different impact when you can actually see the physical evidence of things that happened before. So it's been great hearing all of the kids come through. It's also been great seeing all the exhibitions that we've been working on. So again, just celebrating some of the good work that we've done with all of those things, exhibitions. We very impromptu hosted a Miss America exhibition. We received an award for the Helen Farnsworth Mirrors Genius of Wisconsin exhibition, all of those things. And so really looking forward to doing more exhibitions and kind of staying in line with the successes that we've had. So looking at the operating budget, what you'll see again is adjustments being made. So as John and Fitz and Terry were discussing before, because of the maintenance reorganization, there have been adjustments made to the line items that maintenance at one point fell under. So you'll see decreases in a number of areas. You'll also see increases in a number of areas. Those are primarily due to the increase for insurance. Utility costs have gone up significantly, as well as just in general, the benefits for staff members. We're also increasing our marketing budget, again. Some of the marketing budget falls under operating, some of it falls under membership. So kind of bringing it back to a more averaged outnumber so we can start to advertise the exhibitions and the centennial programs that we're going to be doing next year. Mark, did you want to dive into anything in-depth with this one?
May I perp inside? I mean, I think really the education's probably the biggest thing.
Yeah.
I know you've discussed the importance of the education relative to, perhaps, eventually getting re...
Re-accreditation.
Accreditation, so I'm not sure if you want to talk about that.
Sure.
We lost our accreditation a few years ago, and I say lost, we kind of surrendered it, too, because of our, frankly, our poor education program.
Yeah.
And I think this is, that's one step towards re-accreditation, and I think a huge step. But you two know more about that than I do.
Yes.
I think sharing it with the council, because I know you've shared a little bit with the museum board as well.
Sure.
Museum Arts and Culture Board.
The Museum Arts and Culture Board, yeah. So the American Alliance of Museums is the national organization that does accreditation for museums. What that accreditation does is share with other organizations your level of professionalism. So you think about zoos being accredited, there's different professional accreditations for all of these different departments, so law enforcement, all of those things. So this is really communicating to other institutions that we are achieving a professional standard of excellence. The American Alliance of Museums, or AAM, they really look at some core standards. Education is key to that. So these core tenants of being a professionalized museum in the modern age, they look at governance. So your board composure, your budgeting, that kind of thing, all of your policies. But then they also look at collections management, so how you're professionally stewarding your collections, exhibitions. So are you professionally researching and interpreting things for the public? Are they being used in a scholarly way? Again, education, making sure that we're doing proper outreach and looking at DEI throughout all of the different, all of the different activities that the museum does. So looking at all of these different core standards, they'll evaluate museums and decide whether or not you should be accredited or not accredited. Another thing that being accredited does is enable you to borrow exhibitions and potentially materials from other museums. So if you think about some of these really big, exciting exhibitions that you've seen around, sometimes those require a museum to be accredited. So once we re-achieve accreditation, hopefully within the next year, those exhibitions will be made available for us to bring into the city as well, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. All right, those are the high points. So I want to open it up for questions that anybody might have.
My big one, I mean, thank you for the work that you've done to build relationships and especially, you know, with the indigenous populations. I think it's really great.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about your, some of your capital project plans?
Sure. All right, museum capital projects are on page 253. So again, as it was mentioned, some of our projects did get moved over to facilities. If you're interested in seeing those, those are on... If you're interested in seeing those, those are on page 449. The particular ones, though, on page 453 that the museum is stewarding through... Sorry, I just hopped between pages, so...
453.
453. The multipurpose gallery that you see listed under the museum, when we've referred to the second-floor transformation, this is part of that big second-floor renovation project that we've been doing. The multipurpose gallery was formerly known as Memories and Dreams. It was a permanent exhibition space. Work has already started to transform this space. We're just asking for some extra help to continue that project through to completion. The next CIP is kicking off in 2025, Deep Roots Growing City. That's a permanent exhibition that we've had slated for a number of years. So that carries on the interpretive line of our permanent galleries to really explore the treaty area up to the present time throughout Oshkosh and regional history. And then the third one, the Tiffany Window Removal and Reinstallation. That's the Wisteria Archway. So when you walk into the front entrance of the museum, directly to your right, there's a beautiful Wisteria stained glass archway. That at one point was in the Sawyer Home den. When the Steiger Wing expansion was built onto the museum, that window was relocated. We'd like to put it back into its original place to kind of restore the Sawyer Home to more of its original standard. This is also a project that leads into other CIPs when we're looking at the South Side expansion. So that window has to move prior to the South Side expansion project of the museum. So we're stepping forward into these other longer-term projects.
And I think if you go back to page 449 with the facilities, because that's where the South Side expansion and Sarah and discussions with the board moved the South Side expansion back in favor of getting the Deep Roots Growing City exhibit done. Recognizing, number one, that's a big, it's a big number that you can see, you know, five and a half million dollars.
Yeah.
By the time 2028 rolls around, I guarantee you that number will be higher. Inflation will catch up with that. We're not predicting what the cost is gonna be in 2028. That's today's number.
Right.
So we'll keep an eye on that. We'll update it every year. But that's, when we talk about our $64 million facilities, this is one of them. But that's one that we're putting on the radar screen for everybody to see. Eventually, that has to get done. I mean, Sarah talked about the excitement of having the kids there. Well, one of the exciting parts is trying to see how they can get down to the bathroom.
Exactly.
And the first thing you do when you have kids in a group, it's like go to the bathroom before you go through the exhibits. And it is very crowded down there. And it's just little things like that that are eventually gonna have... They're gonna catch up with us, and just go there, you know, Sarah hears the laughter from behind a couple of doors. But downstairs in the bathroom, it is chaos.
It echoes. Yes.
It echoes, yeah. So I mean, those are in the entrance itself, just it needs to be more... Welcoming isn't really the right word. It needs to be more functional.
Correct. Yeah, it needs to function. And Mayor, you had asked a question about ADA projects and future funding of those. So the museum restroom facilities are a great example of that. So adding more accessible spaces during the South Side expansion is one of those projects. Also knowing that we're planning on hosting not just city field trips, but regional field trips in the future, making the lobby bigger and easier to kind of facilitate those kinds of activities, welcoming in bigger groups, and making it just function on the level that we need it to function in currently is the reason behind the South Side expansion. Going up, you'll also see an OPM elevator modernization. Again, that is in line with what you just heard. So modernizing our elevator. And then up about halfway, there's one called OPM Sawyer House Windows. That's just doing preservation work of the historic home side of things. So making sure that the windows are reglazed and properly waterproofed and all of that so we don't have any water intrusion coming in, so...
I'd like your opinion on the Oshkosh Green Company logo that's outside. I'd like to see it outside so people can see it easy. I don't know if we placed it where it's at, because it's in sunlight constantly. And I mean, you have any concerns that it'll get washed away over time? That it shouldn't be maybe facing a different direction?
Anna, I'll let you speak to that.
I'm not concerned about that. That particular object isn't sensitive to light damage like other objects. It's not made of fugitive materials that I'd be worried about. It's a fired clay. And so that decision was made, I think, when they acquired it, I would say almost more than a decade ago, because I've been there for about a decade now. But I think the bigger concern is its ongoing maintenance. For example, it's a lovely home. It's an ideal home for a business. So we have, we go through every so often and clear those out and maintain it. It does have a protective acrylic cover, but that's not a type in sort of the land of materials and what is subject to maybe light damage. That's not among them.
Detail.
I could talk about it forever.
No, no. No follow-up.
Not seeing any other questions, so... Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, nice to see you.
Council, we're coming up on level 40. The door is closed, which means lunch is here. So if you want to start lunch early, that'd be fine.
I imagine Chief's watching, so...
Chief Stanley and his crew's probably watching, and if not, we'll get ahold of him to get him up here a little earlier, maybe. Keep rolling along. We've still got plenty of time. We've built in now... It'll be fire after lunch, and then libraries after them. And then we have sufficient time still left in the afternoon for, you know, discussions. We have asked a few of the department heads to come back for that discussion. I know last year, when we did this budget meeting, Council had a great discussion. It didn't today, however, there were some questions that were out there that staff didn't answer. We asked a couple of those staff members to come back to make sure that if we want some answers today, we can hear it right from them instead of having to wait or, you know, funnel them through Russ and Mark. So with that, we'll take about an hour break for lunch, and we'll be back a little bit before 1:00.